Gourley.
Here.
Counselor Gersten. Counselor Goble.
Counselor Goble texted me, his computer keeps telling him he's in October again.
We will go ahead and show him that he is present.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Present.
Counselor Collin.
Present.
Okay, I know for a fact Counselor Trask is here, he's in another room. We're having a little technical difficulty with Counselor Goble. The only one that is not here this evening, he has called in, is Counselor Nash. He's not able to make it from work tonight to be at a computer station to be able to call in. So at this time tonight, he will not be present. That said, we will go ahead and have a vote for his consent, for his absence.
I don't believe.
I have a motion.
I'll second that.
Counselor Coleman seconded. I need a vote, by rule call.
Counselor Gourley.
Aye.
Counselor Gersten.
Aye.
Counselor Goble. Table the input here, folks. Counselor Trask.
Aye.
Mayor Mahler.
Aye.
Counselor Coleman.
Aye.
I will show it as five ayes, one unknown at this time. We will amend it later when we know for fact. And then, one absent for approval of Counselor Nash's absence this evening. Moving on, City Man, huh? Now you're live. City Manager Ray Towery wants to talk about the online instructions real quick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank everyone joining us tonight. Okay, just me. Again, thank you to everyone that's joining us tonight. For members of the public who would like to take part in tonight's meeting, I've got some quick instructions to help in case you're new to using the Microsoft Teams platform. First off, if you notice in the upper section towards the right-hand side of your screen, the second icon from the left is a chat bubble icon. Brandon's gonna show us a quick, right here it is, it looks something like that. The bubble icon, the chat bubble icon is the one with the yellow arrow. If you wish to be recognized by the mayor to speak tonight, you're gonna need to click that button. You'll need to enter your full name, your address, your phone number, and the topic that you would like to address with the council tonight. If at any other point during the meeting you'd like to speak, the icon next to it of the hand, which is indicated with the green arrow, is the equivalent of raising your hand and asking the chairperson to acknowledge you. And Brandon and I will do our best to make sure everybody is heard, who follows those directions, and make sure that everything goes correctly. This is our first round doing this online, so we apologize now for any errors made, but we'll do the best that we can. So right now, I'd like to ask those of you who want to speak tonight to go ahead and click on that chat bubble, again, the yellow arrow. Again, enter your name, address, phone number, and the topic you want to address with the council. As we get people in that chat, if we see that there's several people who want to discuss the same topic, we'll go through and pick one. The mayor will recognize one. And we would ask that if you're then called subsequently, if you agree with any of their points, to simply state that you agree with a point or you disagree with a point, instead of restating the whole thing, just in the interest of time. And those people who are joining by phone, we'll try to note that as best we can for the mayor, so that he can recognize you as the chair. I'd also like to add that the fact the meeting is online does not excuse poor behavior. The mayor does retain the right to have people removed from the meeting if in his judgment, they're being disruptive. And last, all votes will be roll call votes for clarity, since we are all online. And with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ray. I will move on to consent agenda, December 22nd meeting schedule, and the other consent agenda in minutes. Director of Vote, Council.
Move for approval.
Second.
A move of second includes the December 22nd meeting schedule, which will be canceled due to Christmas a week, just for clarification. With that said, we have a move of second, roll call please.
Counselor Gersten.
Present. Yes, I'm sorry.
Counselor Goble. Counselor Trask.
Aye.
Mayor Mahler.
Aye.
And Counselor Coleman.
Aye.
Director Julia, five ayes, one unknown to be amended, and one absent. Moving on to recognitions of visitors and hearing of petitions. At this time, I will recognize visitors and hearing of any petitions.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I think we just want to give people another minute or two. Nobody is adding their name to the meeting chat that I can see. I don't know if Brandon can see something that I can't.
I have plenty of time, Ray, that's fine.
Jamie, we see that you've signed in. Do you have something you would like to speak on? And could you please put your address in here, while and a phone number?
I remember Jamie's last name also.
Yeah. All right. Okay. So Jamie has nothing that she wants to speak on at this time.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think there might be some issue with those that are maybe connecting over the web instead of using the actual software. So if possible, maybe we bypass the chat function for those who aren't able to use it. But when we call on them, if they have anything to say, they give us their name, address, and phone number.
That works for me. Just on which one first, and we'll go.
With that said... Oh, a user let us know that they do have chat access, if they're accessing through a browser. So, thank you, Kelly. Actually, we'll just wait and see if folks add to the chat and have things they want to say. Folks are unmuted, so if they are having technical issues, they can go ahead and make sure their mic is on and address the council if they need to.
Another way to, if absolutely nobody's able to get on tonight, and have absolutely an issue of any way of communicating this evening, what I would probably recommend is send an email to the city, and we can reply back to them, and answer to their question, or acknowledge their, you know, whatever they would like to bring forth to the council. So I'd also recommend that one also, they have probably been on tonight. It's important that all citizens are heard, and they have the opportunity to be, you know, responded to their concerns, so.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not seeing anybody that is wishing to address the council. Again, if folks need to unmute their microphones using the functionality in the meeting, they can unmute and address the council now.
Okay. I will reiterate the last point I had just made. If any citizens would like to be heard, or would like to make a statement, or have questions that they want answered, please feel free to send an email to the city of Sweet Home, and we will respond back to you folks, and make sure that you are responded to. It feels very important that you're heard, so your voice counts. So, with that said, we will move forward with old business. Request for Council Action Fire Hall Property, Page 12.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Council, we've had this discussion, previous meetings. We've had some question and answers with the fire district on some difficulties that they run into regarding the fire hall, because the city actually owns the property, but they own the structure. And trying to find some workarounds, and just in some general discussion, there were just some questions as to why we, as a city, still own the property. It's a whopping $100 per year. It's really no physical gain to us. Quite frankly, it could possibly even be a liability, and if there was a lawsuit. And so we presented to both the council previously and prior to that, the Admin Finance and Property Committee, the Admin Finance Property Committee made a recommendation to bring this to the council, and staff is suggesting that we turn the property over to the fire district. City Attorney Snyder has been doing a lot of work on this, and if he's got anything else to add, I'll turn it over to him.
Okay. It's basically, that's correct. We do own the structures and the land there. And I added to the RCA, the last paragraph, based on what was said at the council meeting the last time, when the fire department personnel came, they did point out some things that now would be a convenient time for them, because they're going to be applying for grants and whatever, for seismic upgrades on the buildings and stuff, and this would help with their application, if they could show that they are the owners of the buildings, rather than helping to pass it through the city type of deal. So that's on there. They thought that it would clarify, simplify, and update the property ownership. And they stated that they had no plans on moving their current locations, because they were centrally located within their district, so. And so, we prepared a resolution that would be acted upon by the council, and with that, within the resolution would direct us to, staff to, have the sample of organ and sale deed executed by the mayor and the city manager to transfer the property.
To reiterate what Robert had just mentioned, I attended a meeting recently with, at the fire hall, and they reiterated the same point, that they're in for the long haul, they have no intention of going anywhere. In fact, they're only gonna make a lot of future improvement to the property and adjacent to it. So I think it makes all sense to do this. Any questions to councilors? Okay, I do need a council directive.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Gourley, sub-moved as recommended.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and second by Counselor Coleman. All in favor, by rule call, please.
Counselor Goble. Counselor Trask.
Aye.
Mayor Mahler.
Aye.
Counselor Coleman.
Aye.
Counselor Gourley.
Aye.
Counselor Gersten.
Aye.
Let the record show, we have five ayes, one to be unknown vote. We will amend the coordinating, and then one absent for approval of the exchange of the fire hall property. Moving on, discussion only, modifications to commercial exterior improvement program.
Mr. Mayor, at some point in time in the very recent past, during your economic development discussions, there was certainly consensus about some work to do on the commercial exterior improvement program, but we didn't quite get a number from you. We kind of got a roundabout range. So I'm gonna turn this over to Blair, and he's gonna chat with you just a little bit about that.
Yes, good evening, everyone. As it states in the packet, we talked before about increasing the amount. And what we talked about was a range of $10,000 to $15,000 being the maximum grant award. That's after, that's 50% of the project cost up to that amount. So if someone had a, for example, a $20,000 project that was approved, then 50% of that project could be paid for, that amount, that would amount to $10,000. Right now, our limit is $5,000, and so that person couldn't have 50% of their project covered. It would be cut off at the $5,000. If you make a change, then it would be increased to that higher amount. So I just need to get an idea of what you're thinking. We talked about 10 to 15, what sounds good to you now?
Councilors, what's your thoughts?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Trask.
I think we've been talking about this for quite a while. I don't think $5,000 covers much. And you and I have talked about this before too, and I think that $15,000 would be a good number. A lot of projects are a lot more than $15,000, obviously. But I just think it's a good idea to move that number to whatever the council decides. But I'm okay with the $15,000.
Hey Blair, question for you.
Yes.
If we, here, I'm just throwing this one idea out. I know we have a seat, you know, committee. What's the thought about, you know, maybe we set it to $15,000, but let's say, and this is for councilors' thought and discussion, let's say, somebody comes for downtown project, comes in, and they've got a project that is really beneficial to this community. I mean, we're talking really improve the downtown corridor immensely, but it's gonna cost them a lot of money. Maybe the thought would be that anything beyond $15,000 would come before council for discussion before, you know, maybe, it may be more than $15,000, but it would have to come before council for full council vote. What's your thoughts on that?
Mr. Mayor. I think this is taxpayers' money we're talking about. I'm having a bit of a difficult time thinking about giving, actually giving away that kind of money. I think that if someone needs that, we're talking about a loan later on in the agenda. And maybe that's another way to go, that you could...
A loan above $15,000?
Yeah, a loan above $15,000, or even a loan above $10,000. I'm a little bit iffy about the 15, but I think we need to be pretty careful with this money. I don't want us to be... It's limited, so to speak.
Also, any other councilor's thoughts?
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Gourley. I too am concerned about this being taxpayers' money. In, resounding in my mind, though, is the fact that I think the downtown corridor is a high priority for our citizens as well. And they have compassion for the situation that our businesses are in, trying to, with the economy in Sweet Home, trying to improve their facades is a huge priority. $15,000 doesn't get us much with the cost of building supplies. I would be comfortable with the proposed agenda, with the proposal as it is, and we can revisit more with loans or separate. Let's move forward with what we've got, and entertain other ideas later. But I think right now, if this makes the difference for our business to support our community and our citizenry, then we could do this. This is okay.
So, Counselor Coleman, what's your thoughts?
I'm a little bit hesitant for the $15,000 mark, but I do understand as well that even that doesn't get much when it comes to the major repairs that are needed on downtown businesses at this time. I do believe that the community values work needing to be done down there. So I'm willing to go to the $15,000 mark, but I do also think a loan past that would be a better option than a grant.
Okay. I kind of like that, the loan idea, past 15, yeah. Counselor Trask, you kind of on that?
Well, you know, for me, Mr. Mayor, I kind of agree, but also disagree a little bit on that, because the money that we're trying to give them is an incentive for them to change the looks of their building. But on the other side of that, well, I'm on the fence here, I guess. On the other side of that, if you set a precedent for anything over the $15,000, then, you know, we've been in this situation, or talked about this many, many times, and so I would be a little concerned about that, too. To be honest with you, Counselor Gersten, I never, I know we're gonna talk about the loan thing, but that was not in my thought in this particular incident. So I still think that giving them some incentive to, would not have them to pay it back. Maybe the $15,000 is more than we should pay, I don't know. That'll be up to all of us. But I think it's a pretty big incentive for us to help people downtown that we put the money aside for, to begin with, to help economic development, of course, too. But I think that that would push people maybe toward that. I would hope so, but that's just what I think, so.
Well, this is not a decision this evening, but I do kind of have to get a kind of consensus of a direction for Blair.
Mayor, I have one comment, if I can.
Go ahead, Blair.
I would suggest limiting the decision to just the grant amount. When it comes to loans, business loans are available for businesses who want to take them on. And there are options for a business that's looking to improve a property, because then you can have the property as the collateral for that loan and so forth. So I, when it comes to the facade improvements, I don't think that loans is a good area for the city to get into, because there's other options. And so I would limit, I would suggest limiting it to just the grant.
So let's go back to council discussion. Let's get a general consensus of limit, then. Counselor Trask.
Mr. Mayor, so if we do, this is for Blair or somebody that, so if we do a grant, a loan, then, so how do we, how do we secure that in a repayment? Is there a lien? Is that what happens? There's a lien on their property till they pay that back?
So if we were to offer a loan program, yes, we would need to secure it in some fashion. Typically, their property is collateral. Would, is typically, when it comes to property improvements, that's what the collateral is, is the property itself. But I guess I just want to be careful. I know it's later on in the agenda, this idea of business loans, but I think we need to be extremely careful with what we're willing to take, to give loans out for, because they are much more difficult to administer than a grant. And so I'll just leave it at that.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Ray, you're muted if you're trying to speak.
You also have to realize, in this low tide situation, if you come along now and give a loan, you may be in second place after the bank.
Yeah. So, yeah, going back to what Blair said, I think we just need to kind of get a consensus of the limit, how far we want to go with this loan.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Counselor.
I was just going to say, so if you're looking for a consensus, I'm willing to go up to the $10,000, which is twice as much what we're offering already.
Counselor Coleman.
I prefer the $10,000 as well.
Counselor Gourley.
Well, I know that with the cost of canopies, paints, and new windows, doors, that kind of thing, it's easy to spend more than $30,000, so I am comfortable with the 15. Either way, we're better off than we are now.
Okay. Counselor Trask.
Well, I already said I would be okay with the 15, and I think I'll stand by that. Yeah, I think I would go to the 15.
Counselor Goble, have you got on yet?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, real quick, please?
Yeah.
Just in case there's any questions about the source of this money, this pot of money is leftover from a federal grant from years ago, CDBG grant that was designed to help with housing loans and economic development efforts. So this is, while it's certainly, obviously, the saying "nothing's free" is very true. This is taxpayer money. It is leftover from a federal loan, and is not borrowed solely by our local taxpayers.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
This is Counselor Coleman. Thank you, Ray, for that reminder. I should have remembered, it was the federal grant. And because it's a federal grant that we received, I'm willing to increase it to $15,000 as a grant to our businesses for economic development.
Okay, well, that's, with that said, we have a consensus. Okay, well, that's, with that said, we have a consensus of fifteen. Blair? Okay, we're going that direction with this.
So, Mr. Mayor, I have a question, too. So the, we're going to, if we, whatever number we come up with, so are we still going to be allowed to offer more than that fifteen thousand in certain projects, or are we going to be locked into this fifteen thousand?
We're technically locked into fifteen thousand because like Blair said, there is loans available. Well, correct me wrong, Blair, but the fifteen thousand, what we're saying is, is, is the limit. So loans available elsewhere.
So I, loans are certainly available elsewhere, yes. And, and that's why I would caution not to get involved with loans for facade improvements. However, as the program currently stands, the, the limit is five thousand, but the committee is, is, has the freedom to recommend a higher amount. And I, I believe, and I'd have to check the documents, but I believe the city manager is empowered to improve, approve those larger grants. We have not had the committee recommend a higher grant, to my knowledge. And so that's, that hasn't been done yet, but it's, it's written into the program that that can happen.
Well, I'm under impression that we're saying we can, the higher, we can't go much beyond fifteen at this point, for what you're talking about tonight.
So if you raise, if you, if we raise it to a cap of fifteen thousand, then most projects, you know, whatever, that's, that's basically what we advertise to everyone. If there is a project that is especially worthy in the committee's view, then they could recommend a higher amount in order to get that more bang for the buck if they, in their judgment, it is that way. Now, if you want to tighten that up, we can just say, no matter what, the cap is fifteen thousand. There certainly are options there, but that, that was not a part of the program that we were looking to, to change at this time. That was already existing that way.
Well, I think that if it goes beyond fifteen thousand, I guess I get back to my point. I think I'd like to see it come from council for a discussion.
So would you like me then to revise the, the SEEP documents to basically state that it's a cap of fifteen thousand and the SEEP committee is empowered to recommend a higher amount to the city council for their approval?
Yeah, because as a council, we may agree, agree that that's a worthy project and that it meets what we're looking for, move our community forward. So I, I kind of, I don't know what the councillors think, but I think that would be the, the direction to go with that.
Yes, I'm in favor of that.
What's your thoughts, councillor Trask, councillor Coleman?
Mr. Mayor, have, have we, have we went beyond the five thousand dollars on any projects in town to this date?
We have, we have not. What has been done is some projects have been split into smaller projects and done over time. And, and, and basically delayed a year so they were considered a, a new project. And, and that was one way that was, prior to my arrival, that was how it was done. But there hasn't been any one project that has been recommended or approved for a higher amount.
Mr. Mayor, I, I respectfully disagree with that. I believe that we have in the past, maybe before Blair was here, extended that beyond the five thousand dollars. If I'm wrong, that's okay, too.
Councillor Trask, I think, I, I remember, but it wasn't a split. In other words, one person didn't get more than five, but it was a split. So I understand what Blair's coming with that. It was a split, but they did get more than five. So for clarification, yes, they did. It was a split.
Well, I'm okay, Mr. Mayor, I'm okay with, with bringing it back to the council if we want to do more than fifteen thousand. I'm okay with that.
Because I'm part of that, on that committee, and I remember, we've had some people come before it that have had projects, and I remember them, and they were pretty high in cost. And they, they were like, we told them this is all we're offering, and I think that, I'm not saying scared them away, but they kind of hesitated moving forward because they were asking for a lot of money. So I'm not saying we're going to pay that out, but I'm just saying that there has been projects that have came before the committee that would have probably been a very good project, but it was very costly. So I think the council has the opportunity to review those and see those, maybe it might be worthy of us to look at it, but maybe not. I don't know. Councillor Coleman and councillor Gorley, what's your thoughts?
Mr. Mayor, this is councillor Coleman, and I like the idea of any request over fifteen thousand dollars being brought before council.
I agree with that. On, since we're having outside discussion, I'd also like to see smaller increments for businesses that have been hit really hard to be able to get, stick with the five thousand, but not have to have a money match or make it twenty, so they can go ahead and freshen up their building, maybe not do a major project, but be able to get that money and not, because we're looking at fifty percent. Okay, staff recommend increasing the grant award to fifty percent of the project. Does that stop them from being able to get a small grant to freshen up their building? Like I say, we're going to be having a problem here for the next year or two or three. And if it stops people from getting a decent coat of paint that's not going to peel off in a year, we, I think we need to look at that as well. That's all I'm saying.
I agree with that, councillor Gorley.
I agree with that also.
So can I get an idea of what amount you're thinking then? So as I understand it, you're saying for, we, we offer, if you're going to put in fifty percent of the project cost, you can get up to fifteen thousand. But if you can't do the fifty percent, we're offering up to what amount without a match?
I thought councillor Gorley said five thousand.
I think it's five thousand.
I threw out twenty-five hundred, too, but I would be comfortable with either.
Okay, what's other councillors consent thought?
I would go with the five thousand.
Councillor Trask, councillor Coleman.
I would go with the five thousand.
I guess I'll go with that, too.
Okay, that gives you kind of a consent there, Blair.
Okay.
Hey, look who's on now.
Councillor Global, you on?
Yeah, finally, thanks to Brandon.
We have a couple of topics for your approval or disapproval, councillor Global. So when you get a chance, meet with the city and, and throw your two cents in, would you please? And then we can make that adjustment on the next council.
Copy that.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, can you do it right now? Okay, we can do it now if you want. Let's go back to, all the way back to the agenda. Approval for your vote for approval or non-approval of the consent agenda and the December twenty-second council meeting, council meeting. Did you hear me, councillor Global?
Well, I, I wasn't at that one, so.
No, it's just, oh, consent agenda.
Oh, yeah, yes, for the consent agenda.
Okay, the next one was a December twenty-second meeting, just canceled.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's normal.
Okay, now moving on to old business, Fire Hall property, the transfer of it. Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. And then, I think you're caught up where, where with this business loan program. Basically, we had had, because it wasn't really, actually wasn't, let's see, let me get caught up here.
I heard councillor Gorley speaking.
Commercial exterior improvement program was discussion only. Are you happy with the fifteen thousand max? And moving it forward with the council, if we, if we want anything higher. And then for those businesses that are in need with COVID issues, up to five thousand.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, you caught up.
So just to clarify, the, the smaller amount, the five thousand, is, is tied to facade improvements. It's not, it, it, it doesn't matter whether some business has, has COVID issues or not. It's, it's an application to the SEEP program. And that, that up to five thousand could be paid without a match, is what you've asked for, correct?
Yes, you understand that, councillor Global?
Yes, I do.
You okay with that?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so now we're.
Mayor Moller, can we also have his vote for councillor Nash's absence?
Oh, okay, going all the way back. Councillor Nash was unable to make it this evening because he's not able to get off work in time to make it home for the virtual. So just need his approval for his absence this evening.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so now where are we? We are caught up. The fun tonight, caught up to information only, city manager's evaluation and contract. Setting a roundtable date.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's that time of year. We're actually on time this year. Last year, we were a few months late with this. So we do, council does an evaluation of my performance annually. In your packet, you have both a strike-through copy of a proposed contract. There are no changes to the contract other than the dates of the contract. You have a clean copy, and then you have a blank copy of a performance evaluation. Tomorrow morning, I will email each of you the first piece of the evaluation process, which will be my self-evaluation. From there, the process is that we hold a roundtable discussion to, to talk a little bit further about things. So tonight, I'm asking you to set a date, preferably in the next week, that we would have our, excuse me, executive session, roundtable discussion.
Okay. What's some dates that councillor, that councillors can do?
I'm available whenever necessary.
Councillor Global, councillor Trask, all councillor Gerson and Coleman, what's your dates, thoughts?
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm, I'm not tied up to any particular date. I'm going to be gone a week of Christmas, though, but other than that, nobody's. Yeah, so I, I'm, I'm okay with any, any day.
Me as well, whatever's open.
Okay, councillor Coleman, councillor Gorley.
Mr. Mayor, I prefer the first or the eighth, which are both Tuesdays, but the eighth, I believe, I already have city council. So first would be ideal for me. Thanks.
Actually, um, yeah. So let's, unless there's objection, let's shoot for the first, and what time works for everybody?
Anytime.
Councillor Global, councillor Trask.
I, I don't, it makes no difference to me what time it is.
Me neither.
Mr. Mayor, since I'm the only one that seems to be weighing in on this, I would prefer six-thirty if I could. Thank you.
That's way early in the morning.
Funny, councillor Trask.
I like that continuity.
Yeah, me too.
Let's go ahead and make it for six-thirty PM on December, December first.
Thank you.
I want to be at the roundtable, by the way.
Do you want to be at the square table?
Yeah.
Okay, moving on, request for council action, COVID-nineteen business loan program. Eight-thirty-seven.
So as we've kind of essentially blurred between the SEEP program and, and, and this before us, I'll turn this over to Blair, but we've had some discussions about what we can do to help our local businesses during COVID. I, I'll tell you that if you don't like this, this is on me, not on Blair. I've been pushing Blair to do this. But that being said, Blair has done all the work, so I'm going to ask Blair to go ahead and, and walk you through it.
Okay, so the idea behind this is that there's, there are some businesses, most, with this most recent freeze, there are some businesses that have been shut down again entirely. If you're not aware, restaurants can still be open by takeout, but gyms and any kind of entertainment venues that are indoor or outdoor, for that matter, are completely shut down and not able to operate. And so the idea behind this was that these businesses haven't really been helped as of yet during this most recent shutdown. There, there may have been funds that they were able to get before, but that's pretty far gone at this point. And, and so we thought, you know, what would it look like if we offered some sort of loan program using our city's economic development fund? If we were to offer loans, again, as I mentioned previously, this is not, issuing loans is not something that cities typically do. Usually, there's, there's other financial institutions that, that do that. And, and often, cities will contract with, even if they want to do a loan program, often cities will contract with another financial institution to offer that. However, that, that adds cost to it and can eat up some of the money. So if we were to do something, I would want it to be as narrowly focused as possible. And, and it would be done by contract. Definitely, we would need to secure some sort of collateral. The problem is, is any business that would need this kind of help, you're going to, we're going to need to have something that's specifically tailored to them. And so what we would need to do is have some general parameters that are approved by the council and then have individual contracts for each applicant that would be able to meet their needs, but also protect the city with appropriate collateral and repayment terms. So also, keep in mind, this is kind of a moving target because there are some, some additional state grant programs that may be operating soon. And it's, it's kind of unclear what restrictions they will have and when they will be up and going. And some, some businesses have been able to get some additional help, others have not. It's, it's really kind of in flux. But it is important to, at least to help businesses realize that the city is here wanting to help. And this, even if we do offer something, it, it may be that it, nobody takes this up on the offer. Because running a business is a, a very personal thing for a lot of folks, especially a small business, because you, you may have a lot of interests that are intermingled, and you're going to be looking at your entire financial situation, including your family's financial situation, and not necessarily just the business's financial situation. And so that may change what, what help you might need or what collateral you're able to offer and so forth. So I think the, the important things for you tonight is to basically kind of give us some, some indication of, is this something that you are interested in, in getting into? How would you prefer to see this? How, how limited would you want this to be? What, what amounts would you be willing to loan? What interest rates would you be interested in offering? We would suggest something low, but, you know, you could get down to zero if you wanted. We would suggest no higher than one point five percent. And then what kind of, what kind of payment period? You know, if you, if you have a business take on a loan now, it may be March before they're able to actually make a first payment. And so you have to, to kind of keep that in mind because this is a really, really strange time. And so those are kind of some, some very broad questions, but would like to kind of get some, some council direction on, on what you think. Are you comfortable with this kind of risk? Because the, the trick with a loan is you may never get it back. True, you can have collateral and you can have it secured, but most of the time, cities aren't interested in. Um, true, you can have collateral and you can have it secured, but most of the time, cities aren't interested in owning um, you know, whatever may be offered as security. Um, on the other hand, I have no objections to owning, to the city owning uh property downtown because that could be uh a good thing. But we certainly don't want any businesses to be uh forced out of business because of a loan with the city. So those are, we need to think forward to what the possible consequences could be. But I would love your feedback.
Um, at this time, open for council discussion.
So, Mr. Mayor, we have two businesses now, um, I think. What if we have four? I mean, we could, we could be in trouble if we decide that we're gonna do this and then we have more than the two. Because there are, that fund is limited money.
Any other counselors?
Mr. Mayor, um, my biggest concern is what Blair had mentioned. Um, I don't want this loan ended up, ending up to drive any business out of business that's already struggling. So I think we have to just tread lightly on it if we choose to do anything.
Mr. Mayor, I don't think we're a bank. So I I would struggle with this. Because I think we could get into some deep waters that we don't wanna be in. I I think that, um, would it be wonderful if we could do that? But you, I, whoever said this, I think whatever, you know, it's very limited on the amount of money we have, and we need to be very careful of how we spend that. Um, and I forget how much is in that fund. It's, I don't remember how much it is, but so it kind of, it's kind of iffy for me that um, uh, that we do this. So I'm I'm kind of, I'm not for this, so.
Council Goble.
Mr. Mayor, could I interrupt real quick? I apologize. I just wanted to answer Council Trask's question. Uh, there's between 400 and $450,000 in that account, I believe. Um, Brandon can correct me if I'm way off there, but I'm pretty sure we're right around that ballpark.
Yep, you're right.
Can you say that louder for everybody?
I said, yes, you're right.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, that could go away very quickly if we do these loan things. Uh, depending on what the limitations are, where we're gonna, how far we're gonna go, how much we're gonna go and how much, how much uh, how much danger is there for us to do this? And then the people go bankrupt and then what are we gonna do? So I'm not saying, I hope they don't, but you know what I mean? So it's pretty iffy for me.
So, Mr. Mayor, we also have have discussed projects like this uh cityscape and so forth, streetscape and those kinds of things which come out of this fund also. So those are projects we have already agreed that we wanna do.
Council Goble.
I I agree with Council Trask. Uh, we're not a bank. I I understand lacking the help, but like help, we don't wanna see businesses go out of business, but $25,000, that that's quite a bit, you know, eh, over 10 years. I mean, that's what, 211, 212 dollars uh a month or something like that? I'm not sure. But I don't know, in the long run, I, maybe a smaller amount in a matching grant or something smaller in a small loan. I mean, something that we can help them keep their bills paid, things like that until they get back in business. But that's that's a lot of money if we have a bunch of people jump on board.
Council Gordon.
I think that this is actually a national discussion. Rural America is in trouble. Um, we're gonna come out of this thing and we have businesses that our community are gonna want in place. Just like all of a sudden, everybody's gonna wanna be able to go back to those restaurants. Are those restaurants gonna be there? They're gonna wanna go to the gym and is that gym gonna be able to be there? The movies and all these things that we have pent up and not been able to do and actually grieved to great extent about the loss of this freedom of movement that we've had. And when we have it back, are we gonna be able to exercise that energy and that celebration of our community if it's gone? And I do trust my, our city manager and our finance director and our economic director in analyzing the businesses that could make it another eight months or six months till we see the light at the end of the tunnel on this thing. And are they, are they viable enough? Or is there a debt load too heavy they're gonna fall under anyway? Is this money gonna be just enough to help them to the point to where that any kind of state or federal funds that come their way through loans and grants, they're gonna be able to obtain those without going under to carry them the rest of the way? I don't like giving money away either. I think it's, I think it's money that has sat there for a long time and um hasn't been utilized. But I'm thinking about the streetscape and Sweet Home. I'm thinking about what's going to happen when those key businesses are gone and people are ready to get on with their lives. And so this is tough. I don't believe that this would be before us lightly. I don't believe that our citizens will take it lightly to lose them because they couldn't make it a couple of more months. Um, and I grieve that. So I don't like spending money. You know that I'm tight-fisted with stuff, um, but I do trust um our staff in bringing this to us. And that's what I gotta say.
Well, I take personally because of my own situation, I take this personal because when COVID first hit, um, it was a very much a struggle for my own personal business. Um, there was times where I kind of, huh, it was a challenge. I'm telling you, I just about went under and it's not easy. However, from a business owner, I had to step back. I had to look at my business on a whole. I had to call my vendors. I had to call everybody that was involved within my businesses, say, hey, look, this is gonna be tough. Let's see what we can do to walk through this. And I was able to squeak through and make it work on a two-week freeze. Boy, if it goes beyond two-week freeze, we're gonna have more problems than we realized. And I think that our illustrious government up in Salem better figure it out or we're gonna have a lot of businesses going out and it's not good. And I and I hate to see any business go out of business. And I mean that seriously. Um, I'm getting back to this loan. I I don't think the city should get into a loan program. I think that's that's a very dangerous road to go. Um, we do have a lot of things that we need to do as a as a community eh, with these taxpayer dollars. I would say we shouldn't get involved from a loan standpoint. However, if there's a business in this community, I think the city need to maybe have an open door to say, you know, if they're struggling with their their water bill or their or they're they're having some problems, see how we could possibly help from a city hall standpoint, maybe steer them in the direction of the resources we know available within our state that we could push a business that way to help them out. Um, because there is resources out there that a lot of small business owners are not aware of. I think our, it'd be, we'd be doing our due diligence by looking out for our small businesses and finding these resources and getting them in their fingertips. Um, two weeks, I think we'll be able to hang in there for a little bit. It will be tough for small businesses. Anything beyond that, I think we're gonna have a major problem beyond what 25,000 will cover. And I think we're gonna, we're gonna have problems. I'm not for a loan and I and I'm really torn between that, but I'm not for a loan program. Any other topic or discussion regarding that? Anything else?
Council Trask, you're muted.
Can't hear it.
I get, you hear me now? Okay, so I I wanna comment on Council Gorley's statement that I trust you guys too. That's not the, that's not my point at all, but I don't think we're a bank. Uh, we have to be very conservative with our money and and keep it. I don't think this two-week thing is gonna be the only one. I think she's gonna go, oh, I mean, excuse me, I think it's gonna go on and on and on. And we're gonna, we're gonna be in a mess if we if we start handing out money that we don't know that these folks are gonna be able to re 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 get back into the business that that. I I'm just really, I'm really hesitant to do this at this time. Uh, maybe when this gets a little better, maybe after the first year or whenever, maybe we could redo this or come back and and, you know, I I don't know. I I just can't, I can't get on board with this. I just can't.
I think we're looking at two weeks. I think we're looking at May before things clear up. When when we actually have vaccinations and easier, more testing availability. Um, I I think that it's gonna be here till then.
Well, I think so is too, and I think 25,000 is not gonna cover. I mean, that's, like I said, there is resources out there. I think from a city standpoint, we could maybe push them towards those resources or, you know, work with a business orienter uh whoever and see what we can do to help small businesses that are in trouble, but we cannot be a bank. And handing money out, I think that they may not be able to repay. We just can't be a bank. And I I really feel for the small businesses. I really do. Trust me, I'm there, trust me. I understand where where small businesses are coming from. This is a struggle. So since this was a request for council action, COVID-19 business loan program, we will go for a roll call to push it one way or the other. I need a motion a second just to get it on on the table.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I could, uh, sorry to interrupt. Uh, the consensus, I think, is pretty clear, so it could also just die for a lack of emotion.
On just die for lack of emotion?
Yeah, so if nobody wants to make a motion, then we can simply move on.
Okay, because I I knew there were some counselors that were on the fence of the uh of possibly approving this, so that's why I was pushing for a roll call, but. If there's no motion, it will die.
Brandon, do we have any public comment on this one? Thank you.
Since there is no motion a second, we will push this to a dead vote. Okay? Um, ordinance bills, request for council action, ordinance number 12 for 2020 business license.
Uh, this begins on page 41 of your packet and um I'm just gonna turn this over to Blair. Uh, I know he led you through some discussions a couple of weeks ago on this issue.
Thank you, me again. Um, so as you, it's in your packet, the the draft ordinance that uh that we've worked out. A lot of this is uh stuff that's taken over from uh other cities' business license ordinances and then kind of adapted to our own needs and our own purposes, but it's all fair game if it, when it comes to anything that you would like to see modified or changed. Um, a couple of things to keep in mind, so the the intent behind this is simply uh to improve our relationships with businesses and to gather more information. It certainly is not intended to be, to have very much a regulatory effect. There are enough uh state regulations and federal like regulations out there on businesses that we don't really necessarily need to be involved in any of that. Uh, but the questions I think that we should ask ourselves are uh is really who who should the business licenses uh apply to? As this is written, uh, it leaves, it it basically applies mainly to people doing business who are, have a presence in the city, who are uh operating here in the city. Uh, out-of-town contractors, you know, if you have a, you know, if it's a building contractor that's based in another community that's coming in here to do a remodel, we're not really interested in their information. Um, especially, uh, you know, kids selling lemonade on the corner, we're not interested. Uh, babysitter, teenagers doing babysitting work, uh, you know, once they're allowed to go into other people's homes with COVID, uh, we're don't, we don't really want that information. And so this is crafted not to collect uh, not to require licenses from folks like that. Um, but uh, you should think about who, what, what information, who do you think should be this, this should apply to? The other two items that I think are important to uh to notice is um, the 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 ordinance states that there will be a fee set by resolution uh for this, these business licenses. Um, we obviously don't have a resolution before you right now, uh, so um, you, but we, it would be good to have comment on what you think about uh the idea of a fee, what fee you'd be okay with and and so forth. The final thing to think about is that business, like any information we collect would be public record. And so uh, I would recommend that on our actual applications, we would include a disclaimer that basically says if somebody asks for this information, we're gonna have to give it to them. Um, and so we could be careful with what we really ask for. But I wanted to get an idea of whether that's a concern to you. Um, and if we wanna, you know, we can, we can certainly share public information with anyone. We have to share it with anyone who asks, but we don't necessarily have to, you know, post it publicly unless they ask for it. And so that's kind of um something it'd be good to get your feedback on. Do you, do you wanna just make people submit a public records request if they want any of this information? Or do we go ahead and 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 share it uh as as we see fit? That's uh, that's something for the council to determine. But I'd be happy to take any other questions on the uh the draft ordinance as it's written.
At this time, open for council discussion.
So, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions. Uh, Blair?
Yes.
Question here. What if the business license is denied? I receive the process where they can come to the council, but for appeal. But what if the appeal is denied? What does that mean?
Um, essentially, there the, there's, there's very uh rare cases where this would happen. If you, when you look at the at the ordinance and the reasons that could be given for denial, there are kind of the things like uh the the business is engaged in illegal activity um that, you know, you know, they're, it's like they're trying to get you to validate something that's already illegal. Um, there, you know, you can look, let's see, the uh, I think, believe, I'll tell you the section that where it is of why it can be revoked.
Page 45, section C.
Yes. So, yeah, if the application's incomplete, if it's, doesn't comply with city ordinances or state laws, if the activity would endanger the property or the public's health or safety, if it's um, you know, those, those are uh, or they fail to supply the information that's required by the by the application. Um, a lot of those, it's either the person didn't do the work to actually fill out the application properly, which we we, you know, would do our best to have a pretty easy application. Uh, or they're just uh operating an illegal business, in which case we don't really want them operating uh in town. What would happen is if if they appealed that and then you looked into it and found that there's, that there's no truth to our our findings and that they are operating legally and then then you could overturn the staff's ruling, uh, staff's determination and and grant the license. If you found, if you agreed with staff and found that they are operating illegally or uh or it's something that's uh that that there's a valid reason to deny, then, you know, you could can, you could uphold that denial. And essentially, that business would not have a license and presumably would not be permitted. permitted to, to operate in the city. The thing is, i-if it came to that, they're probably already violating other laws, state and federal laws. And so, you know, they'd be under investigation anyway. So I'm not sure that it would really have much of an effect. I'm, I'm thinking that would be pretty rare.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Hey, right, Counsel Goble.
Blair, I had a question about the, I don't know, really in detail when it comes down to the application process where they talk about, where you talk about, you know, application will have parking spots, which parking spots could be infringed on and things like that. And then for businesses that do food, we really want to know if they have a food handler's card? Or is that more handled at a different level than the city?
So I believe the part, anything that was mentioned of parking or anything like that, I think was for new construction, if I'm not mistaken, for a brand-new. And that's something that we could easily leave out because there's other ordinances that address that. That would be addressed through the building permit process and the planning process. So I really don't have a problem with removing some of that information. The, when it comes to food, that's mainly an opportunity for the city to direct people to the right agency where we would be, we want to make sure that they've gone through the process with the health department and have their food handlers, their, their restaurant license, their, you know, approval of their, of their site when it comes to Lynn County Health Department. So that's, it's mainly just making, checking the box that yes, you've, you've looked through that. And in any business that actually has done that, they're gonna have those copies on hand because they're required by law to have them at their place of business.
Okay. I just wonder, because I, I mean, I like it and I'm for a business license, it's not that big of a deal. But for me, it, there's a lot entailed in this that's gonna make some people go, I, I don't want to do this. This is crazy. And the other one was garage sales. If you do a garage sale more than two times per year, I know a, a lot of folks in town like to do a community little garage sales and things like that. And they do it more than two times per year. I, I think that's a little low. But I understand that we have some places in town that have 24/7, seven-day-a-week, whatever you want to call it, garage sales that need to be, they're not garage sales, so they need to be whatever. But the yard sales and stuff, I, I don't know, I think we should be a little, little less on, or give them a little bit more time because that's, that's community helping community and, you know, people being friendly and neighborly.
And I have no objection to any modification of that. Obviously, your wishes are really what's important here. The reason for any regulations on, don't be act so shocked. The, the reason why that's in the ordinance is that the, the line between a business and just something that somebody's doing in their front yard can be really blurry. There have been cases where, in fact, I think there's one on, on Highway 20 heading toward Lebanon where it's basically a constant yard sale. And, and out there in the county, that's perfectly fine. The question is, do you want that to be something that can happen here in the city?
I understand.
Are you done, Counsel Goble?
Certainly.
Okay. Well, my concern, if I was a business owner, is, is public records when I have to give out my information and everybody in the whole place is gonna have. Maybe I don't want that. So how are you gonna deal with that? I understand giving them a phone number of your business, but anything personal beyond that, to me, I, if that's, if that's the, the way it's going to be, I don't, I wouldn't want my home, my personal number given to somebody that I don't want it to know, for one thing.
If I can address that real quick, i-if you're in business and you won't want people to contact you, then you're not gonna be in business very long. But the, the issue is, we are asking for the business address, the business phone number.
Okay.
For, for folks that want to get in touch with it that way. So it, we really want, it will be very clear on the application that this is information that you are okay with people contacting you at because this is, this is one, i-if you have, it should be information that you're comfortable with your customers contacting you on.
Okay.
And, and that, I think most businesses would like to have available, pretty, I mean, people pay good money to advertise that information.
Yeah.
To add on to that too, if you're a legitimate business in State of Oregon, you are to apply for a business license with the State of Oregon too. So that same information is gonna be registered with the State of Oregon and is still public record at that level also. This just gives us local-level information.
So, one more, I've got two more. So what's the, what's the, what are we gonna do if they don't want to do it? They don't want to pay the five bucks, they don't want to pay the 10 bucks, whatever it is, they don't want to do it. Then what are you gonna do? How are you gonna enforce that?
There is an, it basically just points to the city's other enforcement mechanisms in the code that are existing in the code already. So it basically would be, would be a violation to operate a business without the license. And, and so there, there is teeth in it. It, it would, it points, I don't recall the exact amounts, it points to nine point. Let me pull up the.
Hey, Blair?
Yes?
Just, just a refresher of my memory, how many other businesses surrounding us have business licenses?
Other cities, you mean?
Yes.
Lebanon has one that is not in, that they are not enforcing. I checked in with them and they had it for a while and then, for some reason, they, they sons, they let it lapse intentionally to, to stop it for a while and then they never picked it back up again. It's rather unusual. It is, it is something that in our immediate vicinity, cities do not have, like Albany, Albany does not have a business license requirement. But, so you do have to go a bit further to find cities that do have them. I can say though, that all of these cities are talking about implementing it solely for this, this same reason that we're talking about it, that they need the information and they want to, to have that, that information required of businesses so that they can reach out in circumstances like COVID where suddenly we have a great need to get in touch with them and make them aware of, of opportunities that are around. So that, that's, that's primarily the reason before it. And, and if there's parts of this that you're uncomfortable with, that you'd like to trim it down more, I really don't see an issue with that. This, like I said, this was mainly just gathered from other, from other communities. I think Silverton and a few others that I kind of called for, to, to take ideas from their ordinances. So we, we can have it slimmed down quite a bit, if you wish.
Well, I have one more question. So how, how much has been put out in the paper or on our Facebook and all that stuff to say that this is, this is what we are thinking about doing? And, and if that's the case, which I haven't, I'm not, I'm not on Facebook enough to know. Mr. Goble will tell you that. But, and then on top of that, has it been in the paper to a certain degree? Because I haven't read that, maybe I've overlooked it or I didn't. And, and have you gotten any feedback from businesses that are saying, hey, hey, you know, wait a minute, I don't want to do this, or, yeah, I think this is a good idea? Now, I know there's good things about it, don't get me wrong.
Yeah, yeah.
But have you, have you got any feedback from the, from the folks or not?
Yes. So as for Facebook, I, I really couldn't tell you whether it's been talked about much on Facebook. And I don't recall if there was something printed in the paper. I do know that a reporter was present at, at previous meetings where this has come up in discussions. But I don't know if anything has actually been stated in articles. However, the, the Chamber of Commerce has reached out to folks and I, and I've talked with them about, asked, specifically asked them to reach out to their members about this particular issue. And I've talked with, about it with other businesses. And the, what they have reported to me and what I've found in my discussions with folks is that they expect to have a business license requirement and they see the value in, in the city being able to reach out to them. And so, and in fact, there's even a little bit of value to the, to the business owner because the, a lot of these businesses, as they're working with vendors or lenders in the course of their business, often those other companies will ask to see their business license. And, and even, and if, if they say, well, my city doesn't require it, then those, those, those lenders will go back and say, well, then I need a letter from your city saying that they don't have one. And it just adds a level of, of effort that they have to go through to prove that we don't have one. And so, I mean, we already, when people ask us for it, we'll print off a letter saying, yeah, we don't have a, a current business, we don't have any business licenses required. And that's almost like the same amount of effort of, of actually having a license in the first place.
Any other questions or comments in council?
So, Mr. Mayor, if, Blair, if we can trim it down on that, on page 45, I think when we have that, that item B with the following additional items maybe required, I think those items could be taken off of there. I think that whole Section B could come off. So that we're just asking for that bare minimum.
Okay. Well, I mean, that, that's a question of enforcement. It says maybe, doesn't mean we have to.
Right.
But it gives the city manager that discretion. So we can, we can certainly, we could remove that.
The second thing is that if we do establish a fee, I would like it that that fee remains in, how shall I say it? Remains as it is for at least a year, that we don't waffle back and forth on the, on a fee if we establish. For me, I don't think we should have a fee, but that's.
I don't think the fee needs to be anything to do with, I, you know, just enough to cover the initial time involved. So five, 10 bucks, I don't know, it's up to council, but it doesn't need to be much. But I think the, the business license is important. I, Counsel Goble did bring a point up and I had read that and kind of questioned that a little bit, was the garage sale. There's some businesses in town that you can classify either as a garage sale or as an auction house, but we need to probably address that as far as the time durations on that, how many occurrences.
So, Blair, is there a real difference between registering a business and licensing a business?
Just the words you used to describe it.
Registering for the State of Oregon, licensing for the state.
Well, for our, for our ordinance, I mean, we can call it a registry, we can call it a license. Typically, a registration is just the database, is just the, the information that's been collected. A license would suggest that it's required. And so that's, that's the main difference that I see. But if you want to use some terminology as opposed to another, I have, it could go either way. I need to step away and grab my charger because my tablet is dying, just a second.
Any other comments, Counselors?
Mr. Mayor, I too was questioning the number of times a, a garage sale can happen per year. And I didn't know if we wanted to discuss that number, it's a slight detail, but it is something that I think Counsel Goble had a good point with. It is a friendly thing that people do and help each other out with those yard sales. The other thing is, I, I do think there needs to be some sort of fee just to cover any expenses that the city incurs and the manpower for that. But I, I too am wanting it to be very minimal, whatever just covers the cost.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Mr. Mayor, can we, this might be a good time to have a discussion about what those costs could in fact be and kind of go back to the section of of when they can be denied. So in my experiences with, with business licenses, one of the things is that there was a background check that was ran on the business owner. And if the business owner had been convicted of, of a crime related to the business in a recent timeframe, then the business license would be denied. So for instance, if someone had just been convicted of embezzlement, we probably wouldn't allow them to be any kind of an investment broker of any kind. And again, this is just an experience in another community. Those background checks do have a cost associated to them. And again, where I came from, the initial year was a little bit higher to do that background check. And then subsequent years would be lower because we didn't have that expense. So the renewals would be, would be far less. So we probably need to have the discussion with the council if those are the kinds of things you would want us to be checking into while we're doing this or not. And that will affect both the, the weight, so to speak, the weight that that license carries, but also would affect the, the overall expense as well.
Just a couple of things on, you talked about wording. If this is an information, if this is an informational ordinance, you might want to look at the registration word over the licensing. Licensing at least implies to me that you've given your tacit approval to whoever you've licensed, which would take with it, which would bring in that you're gonna do background checks and that sort of thing. It's my understanding in the, in this in the first place, I mean, we've talked on it a couple of different ways, but it's my understanding in, in this particular ordinance that we were mostly interested in getting information from folks and not in a regulatory licensing as the background would indicate. You just need to tell the staff, I guess, you know, which way you, you think it should go because there is a, a lot of, if you're gonna do background checks on, on people and say they can or cannot be a, a business in town and, and this is how you're gonna do it, that's, that's one way of doing it is just which way you want to go on it, whether it's an informational ordinance basically, or whether it's a regulatory.
What's some of the Counselor's thoughts on that?
For me, it's just information. I don't want, I don't want to deal with the regulatory aspect of it at all.
I don't think we have the resources for it. That's, that's gonna be a tough one, personally. What's the other Counselor's thoughts?
Well, Mr. Mayor, if you're gonna do background checks, what are you gonna do for a family that has five people in that, in that business? And I know there are, there's several in town that have businesses that have family members, brothers, sisters, whatever. And so you're gonna be running into something that could be more than what we want to get into. I don't know, I'm just saying that, but.
There, there, there are loopholes to everything. In situation with, with multiple partners or interests, essentially they choose one. Shall we say they could be strategic with that choice if they needed to be?
Counsel Goble, did you have a thought?
No, I agree with Counsel Gerson. Just informational only.
Mr. Mayor, I do prefer informational only as well. I know this is, topic has been brought up a number of times and anytime it's gotten to the regulatory stance, and it, it seems that the consensus of council is not to do regulation, but just information, especially since COVID has brought to light that we need to get in touch with people to help them out. So that's my thoughts.
So we have a consensus of council for just informational only. So, any other questions or comments from council?
So, the, the question would be, what would, if we did a fee, what would it be if we just did a registration only?
Again, I think it should be minimal. I don't think we need to get too carried away with the fees. It's informational only, it, it shouldn't be that much, just enough to take care of paperwork from a city standpoint.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if we charge 20 businesses in Sweet Home $5 at each, that's not gonna cover a lot of our, our work that's gonna have to be done in the city. It's certainly not gonna come close to covering that. So I, I guess I don't understand a fee at all if it's not gonna cover the cost of the...
Well, you're throwing the number on, I think what it best would be let the city do, do some math as far as what we, we need to do for, for fees. Because they're gonna have, we're not deciding fees tonight anyways. So we need to have the city do some research to see what's the cost that's gonna be involved with cities' standpoint, and then get back to council regarding that. Like, I think Ray mentioned, go to resolution of that part.
I can speak to that if you would like.
Go ahead.
I mean, if you have it informational only and you're just collecting information, essentially, the only cost is the staff time to look at the, look at the application, make sure that it's entirely filled out, and then, um, if, if it's in a non-electronic format, then enter it into, into the, to a, a database of some kind to preserve that information electronically. Uh, with, if it's an informational only, uh, registration, then you're talking just the contact information for the business and a brief description of what they do. And so it's not going to take very long to enter that information in. And with the number of businesses that we have in town, I don't see it as a, a huge uh, use of staff time, but it, it will take some staff time. Uh, so y- you could go fairly small, and it, I mean, if you, if it's, if it's what, uh, fifteen bucks or something, it would probably cover the amount of time that it takes a staff person to, uh, to enter that information in.
Well, that's my question, Blair, is just to kind of, you guys do the math to make sure fifteen bucks is fair enough for the city, for their time. I don't think it needs to go much beyond that anyway, personally, but, you know, five, ten, fifteen, whatever you guys as a city come up with, I think that's fine. Any other feedback regarding that, council? Okay. Um, do need to have this as a, it's a request for council action to move this forward for first reading, orange on twelve, twenty twenty.
So Mayor, if I may, it, it sounds like there's a, a desire for quite a bit of modification of this ordinance.
Okay.
And so, um, I'm not sure if you, I mean, if you want to go ahead with the first reading, that's certainly in your power, but if you wish, staff can revise it and bring it back to you.
Well, it's up to council, they want to motion a second this for first reading, or if it doesn't, dies, it goes back to you, and you guys have to come back with it after all.
Okay.
So, that said, is there anybody who'd like to motion a second to move this forward, or you want this to go back to the city for more work? No, no motion in a second? So let's push it back to the city for more work. Um, moving on to request for council action, ordinance number thirteen for twenty twenty, vacant building.
You're muted, Ray.
Thank you. Again, this is a follow-up from previous meetings, you have seen this before, um, on at least one occasion, uh, in a workshop, I believe, with, uh, with Blair. Um, I'll turn it over to Blair, and, and he can, uh, uh, go through the history and the purpose of the document with you.
All right. I apologize that all of the stuff on the agenda seems to be me. Uh, you're probably getting tired of hearing my voice. Um, so we had talked previously about, uh, vacant buildings, and, uh, in the last, uh, the last workshop, we discussed this, the council was quite clear that you, you wanted to see, uh, a, an ordinance on this subject and something that had some teeth to it. And so the draft ordinance is what is before you. Um, you, you did give me the feedback that you wanted this to apply only to commercial and industrial, uh, areas, and so this, uh, this ordinance does apply just to the commercial and industrial zones, not any of the residential zones. However, uh, keep in mind that there are some residential uses in those commercial and industrial zones, and those would still fall under the ordinance. Um, you know, as with anything, that's, that's well, open to change. However, the, the concern is that, uh, often residential homes, uh, in a commercial area might be converted over to a business by, uh, uh, the owner of the property. And so you just want to make sure you don't lose that, uh, enforcement over those kinds of properties. Um, so the main things that this ordinance does is it, it does put a requirement for maintenance, uh, of a vacant building, and it does put a requirement that the, the owner of the vacant building, uh, notify the city, uh, as to the status of that property and provide, uh, contact information for the person responsible for the building. Um, the maintenance does include, uh, basically keeping the property from becoming a nuisance, making sure that the landscaping is taken care of, that fences and gates are in sound condition, uh, that there's, it's the proper, the building itself is in watertight condition, and there's no holes or rotting boards on the structure, and that windows and doors are secure and locked, that if any windows are broken, they are, uh, they are, uh, replaced, uh, the panes are replaced, and that graffiti is promptly removed. Um, one thing actually that I missed when I was drafting it, I just noticed it today when I was reviewing it, the maintenance list does not mention roofing, and so, um, I would suggest that a provision that the roofing be in sound condition, uh, also be a, um, a condition of maintenance. Uh, it also requires that buildings be secure, uh, and that notice of who's responsible for it be, be posted, uh, where someone can, can find out who that is, um, and that the owner has to, should see to it that it's inspected regularly. This draft actually says twice monthly, so it's up to you to determine, is, is that too often? Uh, what, what is the, how, how regularly should it be inspected by the owner? It also, uh, states that a, there must be a local presence for whoever is responsible for the property, and that is defined by within, uh, that is within thirty miles. Um, so that may be something to tweak because Corvallis, for example, is thirty-five miles away, Albany is thirty-one point five miles away. Um, that's, that would, uh, keep any owners from being able to, to, uh, look after it from those locations. And then as, as with the previous, uh, ordinance, there also is a registration fee, uh, that is set by, it states that it's set by resolution, and so that's, uh, that's up for discussion too, is what amount are you comfortable with? The intent is not, uh, that this be a moneymaker, but, uh, and, and it's not necessarily going to require a lot of staff time. The most, the most staff time will be put into, uh, the effort of, uh, just getting the system up and running. Uh, once it gets going, um, as long, you know, it's not going to take a, a lot of time for staff to enter the information, but, um, it'll probably be enforced mostly through code enforcement, and so some of the, the time for this will be wrapped up into that, the, the code enforcement officer's duties, um, which, uh, would be just kind of handled the same way he handles the other codes that he enforces. So those are some, um, some topics that should be considered tonight as you, as you discuss it. Um, and again, the, there's options for, uh, for modifying this draft. The, the intent really is to, is not to be a burden on, on the property owners or punish anyone for having an empty building, because often that can happen without, uh, you know, any, any wrongdoing or anything on your part, uh, and you can end up with somebody moving out, and that's just the way things go, especially with commercial properties and the volatility of the, of the business market. Um, however, uh, there clearly is a need to have some basic care, uh, put into buildings and, and have the city aware, uh, of the condition of those buildings. And so that's the question, is how, how light a hand and how firm a hand, uh, you think we should have in this area? And, uh, I'd be happy to take any questions or, or hear any feedback.
Well, Blair, I'm glad you brought the roof, because that was one of my questions. I think you have to have that roof in there. And the other thing that I see that I, I thought was a little vague was, um, clutter, trash, um, that's piled up on a lot of these businesses. A lot of, obviously from homeless, but that's a thorn in a lot of people's sides from that standpoint, too.
And that would, that would mainly come from a, a nuisance kind of angle, uh, when, if, if something, uh, accumulates to the point where either there are complaints or it's noticeable by, uh, by staff that it's a problem. For example, I think not long ago, there was a vacant building next to Safeway where pot trash was piling up, and it was just on, it was, uh, uh, unknown exactly who was, who was taking care of that property. Uh, I believe it was Safeway personnel that actually ended up cleaning it up, but they shouldn't be responsible for taking care of the, the neighboring property, but it did get to the attention of the code enforcement officer. So this, this kind of ordinance would be helpful in that area because we, we would be in quicker contact with the owner or the manager of that property.
Um, councilors, comments, questions?
Mr. Mayor, uh, uh, with the, the different, making it different between a commercial and a residential in those commercial areas, uh, this might be a question for Robert. Don't we already have an ordinance or something that says if you have broken windows in your home in the city limits, you have to take care of it, if I'm not mistaken? Uh, that's unsafe to pay the public. Is that not true?
Was that a question to Robert or to myself?
Well, you or, or Robert, either way, I think there's a, I think there's a, an ordinance or something that says to that effect that you can't, you can't have a bunch of broken windows in your, your building, even if it's not, uh, nobody's living there. If it's, if it's a safety issue, I think you have to have those boarded up, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, we do have in it, we have on, on hand a, a dangerous building, uh, code.
Yeah.
Pretty in, in place. You've also got a, a chronic nuisance, um, ordinance in place, uh, that deals with, uh, some of these issues. Um, but that's how you deal with it, um, at this time, would be a, a da, uh, under a dangerous building or, or under the chronic nuisance.
Yeah.
The, the chronic nuisance property, though, tends to focus on criminal activity that happens at that site, and so if you have a property that has those issues, but there's no, uh, criminal activity associated with it, it's not going to fall within that ordinance. Um, the dangerous building ordinance also is, is a bit more, uh, extreme, I think, and it's, it, it's really for things that are completely falling apart. So the, the, the general, um, blight that happens with a vacant property i- is usually not going to rise to the level where that ordinance would be used.
Any other questions, comments from council?
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions, if you may, if I may. Uh, Blair, I'm a little concerned about this definition of building because it, I think it's on page fifty-one. Out at the bottom of the page, you have a definition of building.
Mm-hmm.
We were talking, we're talking about commercial industrial, but the way this reads, it could be a barn or a chicken coop or something else. The way, I'm just saying, the way the definition reads, and perhaps we need to clean up that definition a little bit and be more specific about what we're talking about.
So the definition, the, the issue is that often structures will change over time when it comes to the use that they're used for, and so you really want to make sure that your definition of building kind of, uh, brings in every, every possible, uh, type of structure that this might apply to. Later in the ordinance, there is, there is pretty clear language that this only is applying to the commercial and industrial zones. And so, um, you, this doesn't necessarily mean that somebody's barn is going to be a problem. If you have a barn in the commercial zone, um, that we're concerned about, then, then yes, that's an issue, and it, it needs to be, you need to make sure that it's, that it's maintained and, and doesn't fall into, into this category. But we're talking about the commercial zones, and those, to my knowledge, I don't think there are any, uh, uses like that, uh, that are out there, but, you know, if, if that's a concern, we can, we can look at tightening that up.
Okay, I have another couple of other things. I think that the fifteen days, um, isn't realistic at this point when we're using the US mail system.
Hmm.
So I think that maybe we ought to look at thirty days or something like that, and the same thing with the seventy-two hours. I think you're talking, you're not giving a lot, enough time from my perspective. And then I have one more question, is your question of, uh, the rationale of sending the information to lenders, what is the expectation that lenders would want this information?
So, uh, can you remind me the, of the portion that you're looking at? I know that lender is defined, but which particular?
I'm talking about when you start sending out code enforcement, um.
Oh, right.
You know, uh, additional authority kinds of stuff, I think it's page fifty-seven, fifty-six, fifty-seven.
Yeah. So the, the reason why a lender would be notified is that, um, a lender is, is, it has an interest in the property and, um, has an interest in the value of the property being maintained. Um, and if, if that, suppose that property is foreclosed upon, or, uh, the owner has just stopped making payments and, and is just, uh, abandoning the property, that lender still is responsible for the property and, uh, and therefore, uh, needs to be aware, uh, that this is happening.
Okay. Those are my questions.
Okay. Any questions or councilors?
Ms. Mayor, uh, Blair, you're talking about having that property, uh, looked at twice a month?
That was, that i- I believe is probably extreme. Um, that was just put in there for conversation purposes. How often do you think, uh, that this should, that these properties should be inspected? Uh, the intent, the, keep in mind that this doesn't mean that the city is getting a report every two, every, twice a month. It just means that the, that the property owner is required to be able to state, yeah, I've, I've been looking at, I, this is, if we, if we notice a problem or we suspect that it's in violation, we contact them, we, we want to see their, their log of how often they're looking at this property to verify that, you know, for example, if there was criminal activity that happened, we want to, that, that helps narrow down when the problem might have happened and so forth. Um, so I think two, twice a month is probably a bit much, but, uh, that's, the question is, how often do you think a property owner or the management company that is, that is maintaining it for the property owner, how often should they be verifying that the doors and windows are all secure and that there's no graffiti, or that there's, uh, not a, a major leak that's, that's happened? Um, that's, that's really, there's some variability there, I think, and, and reasonable minds can differ, but I'd like to know your thoughts on how often do you think it should be looked at?
Well, I, I wonder how the real estate people, how often they, uh, look at that stuff? I don't know. I mean, if they're, if they're taking care of rental houses, how do, do they go and check though monthly or, or whatever? I don't know. I, I can't answer that.
So for, for a management company that's, that's, that's managing residential properties, this wouldn't really apply, uh, to them. Uh, if they have a, if they, most of the, most of them right now don't have any vacancies, and so they don't, I'm sure they don't inspect, and we wouldn't be requiring anybody to inspect if they have a tenant. It's only if it's vacant that they would be needing to inspect it. Um, with those rental properties, I would imagine somebody's taking a look at it pretty regularly to make sure nobody's squatting in it, but that's, that's kind of the businesses, um, that's up to that management company. With commercial property, it's a little bit different because the vacancy periods are usually longer, and you're looking for a very specific kind of tenant to fill that space.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, there's a couple buildings right down there where they sell that, uh, legal stuff, uh, that those, there's several of those that are commercial, and I don't know if anybody's looking at, and that guy doesn't live here, and that's, that goes to the fifty-seven A, uh, on, on the very one where you say that if there's nobody, if they don't live here, then they, they're going to have to have somebody do that, and then how are we going to, how are we going to, uh, work on that to make sure that that's happening? I, that would be another situation I'd have to, I, I would think about. I do think twice a month is probably over the top. Uh.
I, I would think, I don't know, I, whatever the, whatever we come up with, it would be fine, but I think twice a month is, is pretty, pretty high, so. Okay, I'm done. Until next time.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, I have one more. I'm sorry.
Counselor, thank you.
So I do not like the idea of requiring them and to have a property managed. So I do not like the idea of requiring them and have a property manager. I would prefer that we, um, start fining or whatever needs to be done rather than having them, having to hire a property manager. If they're not taking care of the property, then I don't know that we have the right to require them to hire somebody. I, that, I have a question about that.
I kind of agree with you, Councilor Gerson, because from my experience, there's property managers that like the dollar or don't do anything about it. And they're not on top of the property. So I think it just compounds the problem. So I think we need to have some teeth to this and move forward. I don't agree with the property management. Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor, I just had a, want to give my two cents here. I too thought twice a month was too many times. Um, I don't know what, what would be reasonable, maybe once a month. But inspecting the property twice a month seems a little much. I think that, uh, somebody being local within thirty miles, I think we could extend that to maybe four, thirty-five, forty. I agree that we probably can't make them hire. Actually, I more so agree that I would rather just find them if the building is in disrepair. And I don't, uh, see that here within this ordinance. And I don't know if it needs to be within this or if it just needs to be within the code enforcement guidelines. But those are my two cents.
So if I remember right, the conversation has been about chronically vacant buildings, not people who actively try to rent them out and these buildings that have been open for years. And so I have very little sympathy for anyone that has done that to our community and not cared. And so if they are being required to at least have somebody within forty miles to check on their building or have to come in twice a month to check on their building and, and make them uncomfortable, that's okay with me. I'm sorry, you make us all uncomfortable every time we drive by that, those buildings that are falling apart. And so, um, I actually am fine with the way it's written. Okay? I, I don't intend to be mean to people who do business in good faith and own property in good faith. But I am really, really, really irritated with those who have taken advantage of our community. And so that's, that's a hard line, but that's how I feel.
Hey Blair, a question for you, there was a council question. Do we need to put the verbiage of fine in this or leave it up to code enforcement?
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
There was a question about, in the verbiage in this about a fine or do we need to leave that up just to the code enforcement side of things?
So the, the ordinance points at, uh, at our enforcement, one of our other codes for enforcement, I think nine point zero five or something like that. And so those, there, there would be if, if you violate the, the provisions of that ordinance, there could be a fine levy, that's the way it's written right now. Uh, and each, each day of, of being not in compliance would count as a new violation. Those are, you know, the idea behind those is typically to get compliance. Um, and so a lot of times the, the court will have quite a bit of discretion as to, uh, how much they, how much they do actually levy in fines. They'll, they'll try to negotiate usually first with the, with the violator. But, um, but there is a fine mechanism in place there.
Mr. Mayor, the, I agree with Councilor Gorley. However, for me, part of the reason I believe why so many of these buildings have stayed empty for so long is that it's economically feasible for these people to allow that to happen. Yes, as tax write-off. So I believe that hitting them in the pocketbook is maybe better than having them think that they have to hire a property manager, which hits them in the pocketbook too, but probably not as hard as if they were continually fined and those fines increased.
If I may, the, the intent behind the provision of having somebody local look after the property is, is really ma- eh, the, making sure that there is somebody who can be at the property relatively quickly if, if it's, it's necessary. And so, um, in the event that, uh, there is a, a, say there's a structural failure and the roof caved in, uh, and it's, and it's a, a major, um, dangerous site, uh, you would want that person to be able to respond quite quickly or be able to at least take a look at it for their own insurance purposes and so forth and be there relatively quickly rather than having someone who is, uh, in a, you know, several hours away that may not be able to get away from their, uh, their home or their place of business in that other location. So that's, that's really the in, the intent behind that. It's, it's not intended to punish anyone, um, but really to have somebody who can respond quickly if we need them to.
Well, then you could just have an emergency contact. You don't necessarily need to have a property manager.
So an emergency contact that's within forty miles?
Right, right. Couldn't you?
Well, you, you could require that, but I would suggest that that's basically requiring the same thing, um, that.
Well, maybe not. Maybe it would be a relative, excuse me Blair, but maybe it would be a relative rather than hiring somebody.
Oh, their relative could be a property manager too. I mean, we're, we're not saying they have to hire a property management firm. We're ha- we're saying you have to tell us who is the property manager that, that is within a certain distance. It, it doesn't have to be some, some firm that hangs their, their hat out to do, or, you know, is, is in business for that purpose. It's just got to be, we got to know who that person is and how close they are to us.
Well, then it needs to be defined what a property manager is. Cause immediately I thought what everybody else did with the commercial property manager, so.
Oh, I, I didn't realize that that was, uh, unclear. I apologize. So certainly, um, we can add a definition, um, that would make that more clear.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, councilors?
I do have one thing.
Robert?
Um, we had talked about before just what you have on, uh, uh, Council Trask asked about. You do have, um, I may have used the wrong word, uh, chronic, that brought up a, a different one. But you do have on the records are on, in the code right now, nuisance building and structures that goes into, uh, um, addressing some of these issues with, uh, how the outside of the building looks in there this time. Not that this isn't important on, on this one, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that to, uh, to answer, uh, Council Trask, uh, there is some, uh, um, words and, and terms in there for, uh, nuisance buildings and structures in town.
Any questions, comments, councilors?
Uh, if I can go back to Councilor Gerson's comment on, on clarifying the definition of a property manager, the, the provision in question, it, it's say eight point two zero point zero six zero, says local presence or property management required. Uh, the first section under there, A, says if an owner or lender has no local presence, um, as defined in that chapter, then the owner or lender shall contract with a local person or a property management company in order to ensure compliance with this chapter. So it, it's, uh, yes, a company i- is an option, but a local person, that can be a family member, that can be a friend, that can be whoever. You just have to have, uh, a set relationship that that person is responsible for, um, to, to address these concerns when they arise.
May I respond to that? So Blair, one of the things we're trying to do is to make things, make these ordinances friendly that people understand them. I think that we, we need to do that. So if you use the term property manager, you know what comes to mind.
Oh, but it also says local person, that's what I'm talking about.
I know that, I know that.
Oh, person.
I'm saying when people look at this, that's what they're going to be looking at. So I'm just, that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
I, I think ultimately our goal is to have some person you can talk to. Cause it's my understanding that these absentee landowners and property owners are not accessible even by phone. They're not responding. And so it's really, really difficult to change the scenario when it's not financially beneficial to them to change their behavior or they don't have to worry about us, they're just not answering the calls. So I think this ordinance is, maybe the only thing is, is the changing it like Coleman, the Councilor Coleman said, to thirty-five or forty miles. But other than that, um, if you're looking for consensus, um, I'm okay with the rest of it.
I, I think basically, I, I think this ordinance is very important. We need to move it forward. I, for me, it just, you need to have some teeth to it and, and make bite to these owners that are letting their buildings go down the drain. So that said, any other questions, councilors?
Mr. Mayor, have there, have we, have we changed any of this at all that needs to be changed in this, in this ordinance right now? Or do we need to move on to first reading next time?
Uh, we need to move on and first reading.
Right now?
There's no more questions. I need a directive on, on, want to move this forward on our first reading tonight.
Okay.
If I may, um, if anyone does want to make a motion to move it forward to re- first reading tonight, I suggest that, uh, you include in the motion modifying it so that roofing needs to be maintained in watertight condition and that the property only needs to be inspected monthly.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance bill number thirteen for, um, twenty-twenty as presented with the recommendations made just now by, um, Blair Larson.
Second.
Motion is second, roll call please.
Councilor Trask?
Aye.
Mayor Mahler?
Aye.
Councilor Coleman?
Aye.
Councilor Gorley?
Aye.
Councilor Gerson?
No.
Councilor Goble?
Yes.
Director show, we have, um, four ayes, one nay and, and one absent. Excuse me, five ayes, one nay and one absent.
Just, just to move it to the.
To move it forward to read first tonight.
Mr. Mayor, could we move that to December twenty-second and have the, the staff be here for that without us? Or do we have to all be here? I'm kidding.
Mr. Senator, first, first, whoever, first reading please.
Oh, shoot. Do your magic there, Brandon. Okay.
Sorry, one second. All right, I guess I'm going to read it manually. Ordinance bill number twelve for twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty, ordinance number blank, Sweet Home Ordinance pertaining to the licensing of businesses within the city. Whereas the city of Sweet Home desires. Oh, thirteen, sorry. Let's try this again. Ordinance bill number thirteen for twenty-twenty, ordinance number blank, Sweet Home Ordinance pertaining to the registration, maintenance, safety and security of vacant commercial and industrial buildings. Whereas the city of Sweet Home desires to preserve and protect the habit, habitability and promote the produ- productive use of real property in the city and to protect the city from blight by requiring that vacant commercial and industrial properties be adequately secured and maintained. Now therefore, the city of Sweet Home does ordain as follows. Section one, Sweet Home Municipal Code, Chapter eight point two zero, titled vacant commercial and industrial buildings is created to read as follows. Section eight point two zero point zero one zero, purpose and applicability. This chapter is enacted for the purpose of preserving and protecting the habit, habit, geez, habitility of commercial and industrial real property in the city and the peaceful, safe, sanitary and secure occupancy and productive use of commercial and industrial real property in the city. The provisions in this chapter shall apply only to buildings in commercial and industrial zones, according to the most recent City of Sweet Home zoning map. Section eight point two zero point zero two zero definitions, as used in this chapter, except where the context indicates otherwise, the following definitions apply. Abandoned building means, one, a building that is both vacant and subject to either pending judicial execution sale under O R S eighteen point nine zero one, et cetera, or to non-judicial foreclosure pursuant to O R S eighty-six point seven five two, et cetera, or a building that is both vacant and subject to either a judicial execution sale under O R S eighteen point nine zero one, et cetera, or non-judicial foreclosure pers- pursuant to O R S eighty-six point seven five two, et cetera, where legal title is retained by the beneficiary or beneficiaries of a foreclosed trust, foreclosed trust deed or a use, or was otherwise transferred to beneficiaries pursuant to the, a deed in lieu of foreclosure. Building means a site, a site build or manufactured structure, including mobile homes, built to the support, shelter or enclosure of persons, animals, chattels or property of any kind and having a fixed base on or fixed connection according to the Uniform Building Code standards. Chief means the chief of police in the Sweet Home Police Department or designee. City manager means the city manager of the city of Sweet Home or designee. Code enforcement officer means a code enforcement officer of the city of Sweet Home. Commercial building means a non-residential building constructed or used for purchasing, selling or conducting other transactions involving the handling or disposition of any article, substance, commodity or services for a livelihood or profit and places where commodities, services or merchandise are sold or agreements are made to furnish them. Foreclosed building means a building upon real estate that an owner obtains as, as a result of, one, foreclosing a trust deed on the real estate, two, obtaining a judgment, foreclosing a lien on the real estate, three, purchasing the real estate at a trustee's sale or sheriff's sale, or four, accepting a deed to the real estate in lieu of foreclosure. Industrial building means a, means a non-residential building constructed or used for manufacturing, processing, compounding, packaging or assembling of products. Lender means any person who makes, extends or holds a real estate loan agreement and includes but is not limited to mort- mortgages, beneficiaries under trustees, vendors under conditional land sales contracts, trustees and a successor in interest to any mortgagee, beneficiary, vendor or trustee. The term also includes any mortgagee, beneficiary or trustee that include, that accepts a deed or in lieu of foreclosure. Local means within thirty, thirty miles of a building. Natural person means a real per, human being as opposed to a legal person, which may be a private or public organization. Owner means any person holding or claiming to hold any legal title or interest in real property, including but not limited to a fee owner, a mortgagee in possession, a vendee under a land sale contract or beneficiary under the trust of, under a deed of trust. Person means any natural person, association, partnership or corporation or other form of legal entity or entity in fact capable of owning or using property. Premises means real estate, including that, upon which a building is located or constructed that is the same ownership as the building and that a reasonable person would associate with ownership or use of the building when viewing the building and premises from outdoors. Where there is more than one building on premises or where multiple buildings on premises are owned by different owners, the premises are common to each building. Premises are often but not always defined by tax lots or recorded legal descriptions. Real property means any real property, including but not limited to lots, parcels, tracks, premises, buildings, houses, rooms, structures or any separate part or portion thereof, whether temporary or permanent and whether or not on the ground itself and any conveyance or any part, and, or any part or portion thereof. Tenant means a residential tenant as defined by the Oregon Residential Landlord and Tenant Act and any other person, organization or business holding other real prob- holding real property under the terms of rental agreement. Vacant means, one, lack of building habit, habitation or use or abandonment or habitation or use, or, two, use of a building either intermittent or continuous by persons with no legal right to be present. Vacant building means, one, a building or substantial portion thereof that is unoccupied or has not actively been furnished and so used as a place of business, employment, residence or other human activity for more than fifteen, one, five days. This includes manufactured homes and mobile homes, whether located in a mobile home park or not. A vacant building also includes any building under construction where no substantial work has taken place for more than sixty-six zero days. Vacant building does not include a building designed for storage, intermittent or other similar types of use. If such building is secure from unauthorized entry, in good repair and does not otherwise constitute a nuisance. Or, two, a building where one or more conditions is present, either singularly or in combination, that would lead a reasonable person to conclude that the building is vacant. Such conditions include but are not limited to, A, overgrown or dead vegetation. Such conditions include but are not limited to, A, overgrown or dead vegetation at the property, B, accumulation of newspapers, circulars, flyers, mail, or other similar items, C, past due utility notices, or disconnected utilities, D, accumulation of trash, junk, or debris, E, absence of furnishings or other items typically found inside a residential or industrial or commercial building, as the case may be, F, evidence of criminal mischief or criminal trespass, or G, statements or other evidence supplied by neighbors, delivery agents, passerbys, or government employees that the building is vacant. Three, for the purposes of this ordinance, a building with an active building permit is not considered vacant. Section eight point two zero point zero two zero, registration. A, a building owner shall register the building with the city recorder in the event, one, of an unanticipated, of an anticipated judicial foreclosure of the property no earlier than the commencement of the other, of the actions described by O R S eighteen point nine zero four, eighteen point nine zero six, eighteen point nine zero eight, two zero one seven, and not later than the first date, than the dates first set for the execution sale described in O R S eighteen point nine three zero, twenty seventeen. Two, of an anticipated nonjudicial foreclosure of the property under O R S eighty-six point seven five two, et cetera, two thousand seventeen, not later than the date of service or mailing of the notice of, of sale described in O R S eighty-six point seven six four, two thousand seventeen. Three, that the owner becomes aware that the building is vacant, as defined in this chapter, or, four, the owner receives written notice from the code enforcement officer that the code enforcement officer believes the building is a vacant building, abandoned building, or foreclosed building. B, each registration shall be made on a form approved by the city manager and shall contain at a minimum, one, if subsection A point one or A point two applies, then, A, the name of the lender, B, the address of the vacant building, C, legal description and tax partial identification number of the property per the county's assessors' records, D, the date of the, the date the property became vacant, or the lender took legal possession, E, the direct address of the lender and post office box, if applicable. Post office boxes alone are not acceptable. F, a direct contact name and telephone number for the lender. G, if the lender does not reside in or have business, have a business office in the city, then the name, mailing address, telephone number, and email address of a local individual or entity charged with the responsibility by the trustee, mortgagie, or beneficiary for ensuring compliance with the obligations imposed by this chapter. And, H, a person or entity appointed by the lender who resides in or has a business office in the city who is authorized to receive service of process, if applicable. Two, if subsection A point three applies, then, A, the name of the owners, B, the address of the vacant building, C, legal description and tax partial, parcel identification number of the property per the county assessors' records, D, the date the property became vacant, or the owner took legal possession, E, the direct address of the owners and post office boxes, if applicable. Post office boxes alone are not acceptable. F, a direct contact name and telephone number for the owners, G, if the owner does not reside in the, does not reside or have a principal office in the city, the name, mailing address, telephone number, and electronic mail addresses of a local agent for the owners. C, each registration must be accompanied by a payment of a registration fee in an amount to be set by council resolution. D, the city recorder or designee shall maintain a list of registered buildings and deliver a copy thereof to the code enforcement officer upon request. E, the city recorder or designee shall share all registration information with the police department, and all vacant properties shall be enrolled in the police department's property watch program. F, if ownership or of a registered building changes, the registrant shall send notice of the change to the city recorder within thirty-three-zero days of the change. G, the registration is valid, valid for one year. The property owner or lender must secure a new registration annually if the property remains vacant. H, an owner or lender who has registered a property under this chapter must report any change of information contained in the registration to the city within ten business days of the change, including but not limited to any change in ownership or designation of a responsible person. I, property subject to this chapter shall remain under the registration requirement as long as the property remains vacant. Section eight point two zero point zero three zero, maintenance. A, every owner of an abandoned building, foreclosed building, or a vacant building shall cause, shall cause the building and premises to be maintained in a generally well-kept condition, at least consistent with conditions found on surrounding or nearby occupied property, and including all the following. One, ensuring that the condition of the subject, subject property does not constitute a public nuisance or a chronic public nuisance, as described by the code. Two, keeping the premises free of weeds, dead vegetation, graffiti, trash, accumulated newspapers, circulars, flyers, discarded personal items, and other items, or conditions that would cause a reasonable person to suspect that the building or real property is vacant or abandoned. Three, regular watering, irrigate, watering, irrigation, cutting, pruning, and mowing of the lawns and other vegetated areas of the subject real property, and the removal of all trimming and debris resulting from such work. Four, all fences and gates shall be maintained in sound condition and in good repair. Five, foundations, basements, cellars, and crawl spaces shall be maintained in sound and watertight condition, adequate to support the building and protect against the entry of rodents or other animals. Six, exterior walls shall be free of holes, breaks, loose or rotting boards or timbers, and any other condition which might admit rain or dampness to the interior portions of the walls or the interior spaces, and shall be protected against the entry of rodents or other animals. Seven, exterior windows and doors shall be maintained in sound condition and good repair with hardware for locking, and the locking mechanism maintained in properly functioning condition. Eight, any window which is broken, cracked, or missing glass or glazing shall be replaced and maintained in good repair. Nine, all graffiti shall be promptly covered or removed.
Ten, ten would be, roofing will be maintained in good repair and, in watertight condition.
B, compliance with this section does not relieve a person of any obligations imposed by state law, other sections of this code, or any covenants, conditions, and restrictions that apply to the building or premises. Section eight point two zero point zero four zero, security. A, every owner of an abandoned building, foreclosed building, or vacant building shall cause the building to be secured, including closure and locking of windows, doors, gates, and other openings allowed access to the building, and thereafter maintained so as not to be accessible to unauthorized persons. B, the owner shall post notice, which provides at a minimum a direct contact name and telephone number available twenty-four to four hours a day for persons to report problems or concerns with the building or real property. The following standards apply to this notice. One, the telephone number listed in the notice must, A, be answered or reasonably likely to be answered by a human being during the hours of eight A M. and five P M. local time. B, be connected to a voicemail system that records calls between the hours of five P M. and eight A M. local time if no human is available to answer the phone. And C, be it a domestic number or a toll-free number, but not an international number. Two, the notice must be placed on the interior of a window facing the street to the front of the property so that the notice is easily decipherable from outside of the building. If no such area exists, then the posting must be placed on the exterior of the building in a, in a location visible from the street to be, to the front of the property. An exterior posting shall be constructed of and printed with weather-resistant materials. Three, the notice shall be printed in a typeface at least eighteen-one-eight points in size, and must list the name, the contact information of the owner, or local individual or entity charged with complying with this chapter, along with the following phrases completed by the appropriate identification and contact information. End quotes, "This property owned, managed by blank," end quote, begin quotes, "to report problems or concerns, call blank," end quote.
I was gonna offer here, Brandon.
My turn.
Section, section eight point two zero point zero five zero, inspection. Every owner of an abandoned building, foreclosed building, or vacant building shall inspect the building and premises no less than twice monthly to verify the requirements of this chapter. That will be changed to once monthly. And any other laws applicable to the building are being met. B, the owner or agent inspecting the property shall record and present to the city manager, code enforcement officer, or designee, upon request, the dates of inspection in a form to be provided by the city. Section eight point two zero point zero six zero, local presence or property management required. If an owner or lender has no local presence, as defined in this chapter, that owner or lender shall contact, contract with a local person or property management company in order to ensure compliance with this chapter. B, an eighteen-inch by twenty-four-inch notice shall be posted by the owner or responsible person, identifying a local direct contact name and twenty-four-hour contact phone number for persons to report problems or concerns, and the posting shall be placed on the interior of a window facing the street to the front of the property so it is visible from the street. If no such area exists, then the posting shall be placed on the exterior of the property in a location visible from the street to the front of the property. An exterior posting shall be constructed of and printed with weather-resistant materials. If an owner fails to comply with the requirements of this chapter, within fifteen-one-five days after receiving notice that the code enforcement officer believes that the property is vacant, then the owners or lenders shall contract with a property management company to perform the inspections outlined in S H M C Sections eight point two zero point zero five zero, and verify that the maintenance and security requirements of S H M C Sections eight point two zero point zero three zero, and S H M C Sections eight point two zero point zero four zero are being carried out. A property management company retained under this section must post the notice described in S H M C eight point two zero point zero four zero subsection B. Nothing in this chapter prevents a local owner, owners, from contacting, contacting with a property management company to assist the owner in meeting the owner's responsibilities under this chapter. Section eight point two zero point zero seven zero, additional authority. The code enforcement officer may require, with city manager approval, and owners, or lender, to implement any additional maintenance listed below. A, installation and operation of additional security lighting. B, increased frequency of property inspections. And C, employment of an onsite security guard. D, any other measures as may be reasonably required to prevent the decline of the property. Sections eight point, section eight point two zero point zero eight zero, additional remedies lien against real property. In addition to other penalties or enforcement specified in this chapter, if a lender or owners fail to register the building or premises as provided in this chapter, the code enforcement officer may give notice of such failure by certified mail. The notice shall be directed, one, be directed to all persons shown on the assessors' records or otherwise known to the city to be the owners. Two, refer to the real property involved with convenient certainty, a building's street address, if any, being sufficient. And three, notify the owner to comply with the registration requirements in this chapter within fifteen-one-five days of mailing. B, if a lender or owners fail to maintain, inspect, or secure the building or premises as provided in this chapter, then notwithstanding whether the premises is registered, the code enforcement officer may give notice and abate such conditions as follows. One, give written notice to the owner that includes the following. A, a statement that the code enforcement officer has evaluated the building as being a vacant building pursuant to the definition of vacant building set forth in S H M C Section eight point two zero point zero two zero, along with a statement of the reasons why the building has been so evaluated. B, a reference to the building with convenient certainty, a building's street address, if any, being sufficient. C, notice of the deficiency in maintenance, inspection, or security that has been observed in direction to comply with the maintenance, inspection, and security requirements of this chapter within seventy-two, seventy-two hours of the time described in subsection B to A. B, notice that if the condition is not corrected within seventy-two, seventy-two hours, the city may cause the real property to be maintained, inspected, or secured, as provided in this chapter, and will charge the cost to the lender or owners, and register the name on the city lien docket against the real property. This subsection B point one point D constitutes the authority needed for the city to so maintain, inspect, or secure property to the standards of this chapter. Two, a copy of the notice described in subsection B one must, at a minimum, be, A, posted to the front door of the building, or to that side of the building fronting the most well-traveled street adjacent to the building, with the date, time of day, and name of the person posting the written notice on the front of the document in permanent ink. B, mail them these three business days before abatement to the owner or owners at their last known mailing addresses on record with the Lynn County Assessor's Office on the date of posting, or available from title company or other documents by certified mail, no later than the date the real property is posted. If no mailing address is of record with the Assessor's Office or known to the Sweet Home Police at that time of posting, then a good faith effort to locate an address for an owner or owners conducted on, or before the day the notice is posted will satisfy the section. Three, the code enforcement officer shall make a good faith effort to locate the telephone number of the owner and call the owner on the day notice is posted, and give a person reasonably appearing to be meaningful or connected to the real property oral notice that the building has been evaluated as vacant, and that there are seventy-two, seventy-two hours to secure or maintain the building, as the case may warrant. Efforts to locate phone numbers and call the owner qualifies good faith if they are reasonable under the circumstances then existing. Four, notices mailed under subsection B to B must be placed in the mail three business days before commencement of city abatement activity under this chapter. For this purpose, a business day is any day except a Saturday, Sunday, or legal holiday observed by the State of Oregon under O R S one eight seven point zero one zero and one eight seven point zero two zero. If the building is registered with, with the city, then the code enforcement officer must also send the notice required under subsection B to B to the lenders listed in the registration materials. The code enforcement officer will send this notice concurrently with the notice required under subsection B to B. If the building is not registered with the city, then the code enforcement officer may send a courtesy copy of the notice required under subsection B to B to one or more lenders if the lenders have an ownership interest in the property, as opposed to a mere security interest. And if the code enforcement officer has actual knowledge of the ownership interest on the day, the code enforcement officer sends the owner notice under subsection B to B. This provision does not create or impose a duty on the code enforcement officer or any city employee, official, or agent to receive or collect information about lenders, or to send courtesy notice to a lender. C, nothing in this section obligates the city to remedy the problem conditions alleged in the code enforcement officer's letter without charging the cost of such abatement as a lien against the real property on which the building is constructed. The total cost of such abatement, abatement, including but not limited to the time of the city employees or contractors, materials, expenses overhead, and legal fees and costs shall be included in such lien filing. D, the city manager at or near the time council passes this vacant building ordinance or any amendment thereto, so promulgate a press release that announces passage of the legislation. A press release is adequately promulgated under this section if it is directed to the median sources customarily contacted by the city manager for distributing newsworthy city information. Failure of or disagreements about compliance with this subsection apply no defense in any action. Section eight point two zero point zero nine zero, penalty. A, any person who violates any provision of this chapter may be prosecuted and penalized under Sweet Home Municipal Code, Chapter nine point three six. B, each day a violation is allowed to persist by a lender or owner constitutes a separate occurrence. Section eight point two zero point one zero zero, duties joint and several. Where a building or premises is owned by more than one person, any duty created by this chapter is joint and several to all owners.
Want me to take over?
Please.
Section eight point two zero point one one zero, appeals. A, a lender or owner who is required to implement additional maintenance or security measures as provided for in Sweet Home Municipal Code, Section eight point eight zero point zero zero, shall have the right to appeal to the municipal court by failing a petition for a hearing before the court with the court clerk. Additionally, a lender or owner who has received a notice of abatement outlined in Section eight point two zero point zero eight zero B may, within fifteen-one-five days after mailing of such notice, may likewise appeal to the municipal court for relief by filing a petition. One, such a petition must include, A, a copy of the code enforcement officer's notice, B, facts upon which the petitioner relies for relief from the obligations of this chapter relative to the building or premises, C, the petitioner's signature, telephone number, and mailing address. If a petitioner is not a natural person, a natural person must sign the petition on behalf of the petitioner and provide his or her mailing address and direct telephone number. And, D, the payment of a filing fee, if any, is established by the city council from time to time for the petition. If the municipal court finds that strict compliance with this chapter would cause a real and unnecessary hardship upon the petitioner, then the court may relieve the petitioner of one or more obligations of this chapter. Three, filing a petition under this subsection does not, A, relieve an owner's or, or lender from complying with any requirement of this chapter, including requirements listed in posted or mailed notices, B, stay city abatement of a building or premises under other city ordinances, C, require the city to reverse, recancel, or undo any abatement action or effort completed, planned, or in progress at the time the petition is filed, or, D, avoid any abatement cost or lien, whether or not the cost or lien has been calculated, or if calculated, charged against real property. Four, any relief granted under this section operates only upon an owner or lender listed as a petitioner, passed by the council and approved by the mayor this blank day of blank twenty-twenty. Mayor, blank, attest, blank, city manager, ex officio, city recorder.
Any questions, councilors? Can I need a council directive to move this forward to second reading?
So moved.
Councilor Coleman was first, Councilor Trask second. All favor by roll call.
Mayor Mahler? Councilor Gorley?
Aye.
Councilor Gerson?
No.
Councilor Goble has to leave. Councilor Trask?
Aye.
And?
Councilor Coleman says aye, too.
Show four ayes, one nay, one needs to be, Councilor Goble needs to submit his motion of aye or nay. Council Goble needs to submit his motion of aye or nay. Still passes to move forward to second reading on December eighth, council meeting.
I, I think on that, on the last one, if he's going for a reading, he's gone.
He's just gone, okay. Show is well.
He had to leave.
He had to leave. Show is on record, he left. He do have four ayes, one nay, one absent. Moving on to December eighth, second reading. That's on the second reading, nothing on the third reading. Any reports to committees? Any reports to committees?
Mr. Mayor, the the health committee. Jeff Taylor came and spoke to us, or virtually spoke to us. And I think it was a really good meeting. And I think it was very enlightening and the fact that we're doing these things virtually was a success. Thank you.
Any other committee notes? Parts of city officials, mayor's report, I have nothing to report other than. I was in contact with the Detroit's mayor and we are still moving forward to try to get that out. It's building up there to him. I talked Dominic, I think Ray can add to it. We're slowly moving that way. I think we're, we're making progress. City manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Boy, the last two weeks have been all about COVID for us for the most part. OSHA has handed down some additional rules that we're working our way through. Each department, each location has a series of assessments that they have to do for, for each classification. And we continue to work on all of those things. And then, of course, the mayor laid down her, or the, excuse me, the governor. Announced a two-week freeze. There are some challenges to that as well in that she announced, made an announcement. And then didn't actually put it in writing until several days later. She has in fact had a history of making an announcement and then the written form not matching her her verbal presentation. So we were forced to wait until the last minute. And then make adjustments to how we operate based on, on some of those things. We did choose to close all buildings to the public. The only exception is the police department lobby is open for emergency use. For emergency situations. There would be rare occasions where by appointment, one might be able to get into city hall. Otherwise, all buildings are closed to the public. However, we still continue to offer services. Public Works Crew is still working hard. Library has gone back to curbside services. All that was made available to everybody in our press releases that have gone out and other information. That's the gist of it. I've, I've been in contact with each of you about property tax payments that we've been receiving from the county. I think what I'd like to do, Mr. Mayor, if at all possible, is, is ask if you would go forward with the finance director's report. And then, because he's going to cover the first quarter of the year. And then come back if we could, just so that things are chronological. And we can talk about our most recent property tax collections.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In your packet is a memo that I put together for you regarding kind of the first quarter financials for, for the city. I tried to frame this memo in the same manner as your budget documents. So they're kind of grouped together in, in a similar fashion to hopefully make it easier to, to follow and, and understand. The first section is indeed property taxes. Twenty twenty has been a wild year for many reasons and our financials are certainly no different. Through the first quarter, our property tax revenues were down nearly twenty percent. What we typically get in the first three months of the year, July, August, and September. Is basically delinquent tax payments. No actual current year property tax payments come in until at the very late October, kind of the last day or two of October. And then November and, and early December, we really get hit hard with all of the current revenues. So through the first quarter, we haven't, we hadn't seen any of the current property tax revenue for this current fiscal year. However, that does, that does outline a disturbing trend for us. If, if delinquent payments are down and folks are not able to keep up with, with payment arrangements they've made with the county or able to catch up on their payments, that certainly doesn't speak good things for the rest of the fiscal year. So it's something that we have to monitor very closely as we continue through the year. Our funds do have reserves to at least keep us going for a little while. But certainly bleeding those reserves dry does cause concern in the long term. So we're monitoring that closely and we'll, we'll follow up in future quarters as we go through. I do want to, to remind folks of what we budgeted in, in property tax revenues for the year. We budgeted that compression levels would drop from eighteen or nineteen percent to eighteen percent. We budgeted an assessed value increase of three percent for property values across the city allowed under measure fifty. And we also budgeted for an eight percent reduction from the total billings that the county issues to homes and properties. To account for early pay discounts and delinquencies. Eight percent is a high figure for us. Typically, we budget a four percent drop from what the county estimates for our property tax values. Which includes a three percent discount that folks get for paying early and a one percent delinquency rate. We planned for additional given, given COVID and, and some of the uncertainties and so for forecasting a little bit here, I'm glad we did. Service charges. This is, as, as listed there, service fees include franchise fees from utility companies, library fees. Utility connections, court fees, and planning fees. This does not include building permits. So keep that in mind as we look at this. Court and franchise fees were up twenty-five percent. Those are primarily in the general fund and the internal service fund. But library and utility fees. Utility fees do not include monthly payments for water and sewer. But water connection charges, SDC fees, those kinds of things are included in that. We're down an average of sixty percent for the first quarter. When you compare it to the prior year. We believe this is a, a direct result of the coronavirus restrictions. And to having to close our facilities and, and seeing less traffic on, in all of our functions that we do as a city organization. So again, another troubling trend for us and certainly something to monitor as we go through the year. I do want to highlight that most of those service fees that, that are down, so the library and the utility fees. Are items that do not make up a major portion of each of those budgets. For example, the library fees are budgeted at about five thousand dollars a year. On a, on a four hundred thousand dollar annual budget, five thousand isn't a lot. So it's, it's at least something to, to keep track of. In this memo, there are also graphs included. All of the blue bars that you see are actual revenues for those given fiscal years that are down below. The green indicates what we had budgeted and the red indicates the projected revenues for each of those groupings. Utility revenues, as I mentioned before, those were not included in the utility fees from the prior section. I it's with a mixed bag, I guess. I'm, I'm happy and not happy at the same time, but utility revenues are up four point eight percent over the first quarter when compared to the prior year. That's good news for our utility systems. We can continue to do the work that, that we had planned for and, and budgeted for. There's a lot of, there's some capital needs, certainly with the treatment plant, if you remember the budget process. And additionally, this community, it, it shows some strength and resiliency in this community in, in being able to, to keep going with some of that stuff. And we've had some donations for past due accounts, if you remember. In the April timeframe, the generous donor contributed to, to paying off delinquent balances. So that certainly helped keep us going in that regard. At this point in the year, I don't project any major change in utility revenues. I do think we'll bring in a little bit extra, but I think we'll, we'll stick with our budget for the most part. Gas taxes. This is a concerning item for us. As this is primarily the only thing that funds our, our street maintenance projects. If you remember, we revised before the budget was submitted to you all, we revised the gas tax revenue. And, and brought it down from kind of the original estimate because of COVID. Using ODOT projections. So we budgeted a total of six hundred eighty-six thousand. At the end of the first quarter, those receipts are down still. Telling us that, that there isn't as much travel, fuel taxes aren't, aren't generating what they used to. And also, if you'll remember, there's a payroll tax. Each employee in the state of Oregon pays one tenth of one percent. Those revenues are likely down as well as, as folks have faced unemployment and, and other other issues. In October, the, the Oregon Department of Transportation released an updated report that tells us to expect a reduction of nearly forty-one thousand dollars from, from that original budget that we set. That's hurtful, certainly, again, because that is the only revenue source really for that fund. It does take a, it does impact our street projects and, and, and is going to cause public works to, to be a little more creative and and likely put off some projects in that regard. There is a, a position in that, in that division that has been left unbudgeted and we will likely leave unbudgeted. So they are down, down an entire FTE and I don't see that coming back in the, in the next budget year. But, but plan on, on tax receipts for gas taxes being down for the rest of the year. Other revenues, this graph looks a little skewed because other revenues includes the money that, that we anticipate for the wastewater treatment plant and grants from the Oregon Parks and Rec Department. But we are doing, we are doing all right with other revenues. That includes building permits, interest. Interest is way down, but not a major portion of our budget. Grants and other miscellaneous revenues are included in that. So I anticipate a little bit of, of relief there. So we'll, we'll watch that as we go. Two more sections for you, personnel expenses. Generally, those make up about fifty percent of the city's overall expenditures annually. At this point, we show the personnel expenditures are in line with what we had initially budgeted. So we anticipate that, that will kind of be flat there with no additional increases. Lastly, materials and services. The, the overall budget is down for the year so far. We're at eight point one percent less than where we were the same period last year through the first quarter. That's certainly helpful and, and given that, that our revenues are down, this helps to offset some of that impact and, and, and preserve those reserves come the end of the fiscal year. We are kind of propped up a little bit by the ending fund balances from the prior fiscal year. If you'll remember, the city implemented a spending freeze in March, April? March, I think. That ultimately resulted in a carryover of two point six million dollars across all of our city funds. And that resides in each of those funds to help kind of get us through these, these economic troubles. There's still a lot that remains to be, that, that remains to be painted. We don't really know what everything looks like for the rest of the year. Given certainly additional restrictions that we're under now related to COVID. And we're not exactly sure what the economic picture looks like. This presents our best, our best educated guess on what we anticipate seeing for the rest of the fiscal year.
That said, I'll turn it back over.
So Brandon's covered the first quarter and I want to give you a a sneak peek of what we're looking at right now for the major part of, of our revenues. If you recall, when we show revenue numbers by month. November always has a huge spike of revenue. It's the, definitely the lion's share of our revenue streams. Of our revenue stream that comes in. I, I, I think and Brandon can correct me, but it's well, right around the sixty percent of, of our revenues for for property taxes come in, in November, sixty percent or more, I think. So that, and that usually again comes in November. Here we are in November and we've started to see those property taxes. Brandon, can we, can I share my screen? I can request control here, correct?
No, hang on, let me stop sharing mine.
Okay.
And then it should let you.
So I think, hopefully everybody can see a spreadsheet we have there. We received our first shot of property tax the last Friday in in October. And you can see in twenty nineteen, that total was about ninety thousand. It was over ninety thousand dollars. In twenty twenty, that total was eighty-three thousand dollars. All of our departments have various funding sources except for two. The police department, the library, and everybody's aware that those two departments are funded by levies, which both passed overwhelmingly very recently. Both well above seventy percent. I think Jeff holds bragging rights with a one percent higher approval rating than, than the library got, but both of them are seventy-four, seventy-three percent passing. The police department budget, remember their permanent tax rate is, is seven dollars and eighty-five cents. The libraries, I believe, is a dollar seventeen. Both those are per thousand. The police department budget is, is, you know, well over three million in the neighborhood of three and a half million dollars, while the libraries is about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Little things make a larger change to the library. And so I've, I've highlighted this here for you. If you look to the right, that first property tax payment was seven, almost eight percent below the same payment last year. And if you go to week two, it was just over sixty-five percent less than what it was last year. You know, that payment was only fifteen thousand dollars versus forty-three thousand. So now remember what we said, the lion's share of things come in, in November for particularly those two those two departments. I panicked here. I, I honestly did. I started to sweat. I think I was doing laps throughout city hall when, when this number came. The following week, we got a little bit better. It was twenty-seven percent above the payment from last year. So then we start asking ourselves, why, what's going on? We reached out to the county. We're still working with the county to, to figure out what those issues are. There's a couple of things that that can be related to. You've heard we, we call non-payment delinquencies. But we also could be seeing where people are choosing to make payments on their property taxes versus paying it all upfront to take advantage of the three percent discount. This is a troubling trend when you take what Brandon shared with us that the delinquencies were not coming in the first quarter. And now we're seeing an increase in, or a, or lower payments this month. It's, it's a bit of a scare for us. And it, it's a little bit uncomfortable. We're going to continue to work with the county. We did receive the fourth payment last Friday. And it was still better. It was three percent above last year's. Which only puts this month's payments down about two and a quarter percent. Our concern moving forward is if delinquencies increase. And even if payments, people are opting to take payments. Given the, the governor's freeze, the rise in unemployment, again. Our concern is that delinquencies are just going to continue to go on the rise. So we will continue the spending freeze. I know some of you as counselors have gotten some questions related to the library and the staffing there. We did give notice of a potential layoff. The union contract required that we give twenty-eight days notice. We did give that to the three part-time staff there. Given this latest payment, however, and what we've done with our spending freeze in all departments, so the library has not been buying books, new books, to refresh their stock. Rose volunteered and took, gave up her COLA this year, as all the department heads did, to try and help with that cash carryover and save money, to try and make sure we don't have to lay people off. We're to continue to do that work to try and avoid layoffs at any cost. I think, I can't make any promises, though, right now, as far as what we're going to do related to ours, though, moving forward. Excuse me. It's all going to depend, the county's going to get us some more information within the next couple of weeks related to how many new delinquencies we are seeing, and who's choosing to do payments. From that, Brandon and I will be able to forecast the new delinquency rate and project out again for five years, or six years, as we always do. The issue right now is with, when we look at what we have, our five-year forecast takes us down to the six-month mark, and if we go out a sixth year, it takes us down to, I believe, four months of operating expenses. So we've got to make some changes so that we stay in that six-month area. Currently, right now, using what we know, we're at about a 12-month carryover. We could literally operate the library for about 12 months with no new revenues, but again, we're wanting to do the most good for the most people for the longest period of time, and so we forecast out five years, and with what we're doing currently, that's not a pretty picture. We'll continue to work and keep you informed. We will continue to be very, very prudent in our spending all across the board, and we will do whatever we can to avoid laying off any of our team members. We don't want to do that at all. Our library team are dedicated, they work really, really hard, they're loved by the community, and we appreciate them for what they do. They do a tremendous job and go above and beyond in what they provide in customer service, and we want to make sure we can keep them and let them continue to serve the community. So as we know more, we'll let you know more. Hopefully, in the next week or so, we'll get some more information from the county that will allow us to do some more accurate projections, and then we will share that information just as soon as we can.
Mr. Mayor, if I can add one note, the property tax revenues through the, through the end of week four there, it's two and a quarter percent down from the prior year, but that's four and a half percent down from what we budgeted for the year. So it's, that's the concern is, you know, we obviously have rising costs, and with those rising costs, we obviously needed the additional revenue, so the four and a half percent is the key component that we're watching here.
Thanks, Brandon, and well said, Ray. It's going to be interesting come budget time, let me tell you that. Anything else, any department directors, any questions to the department directors? Any department directors want to bring anything else up? Any city attorney? Other than council, council business good of the order?
Mr. Mayor, I will give up my pay after we get this squared away. That's just me. I will forego that, I don't need it, I don't need the money that, I don't need it anyway, but I would definitely give up my money for my council pay, and I'll make that what I want to do, so. It isn't very much, but it's what I can do. I don't know how you do that, Brandon, but I'm okay with it.
To do that, we can certainly work with you separately.
Did you hear the gavel?
Yes, I did.